I saw some people parked in a fire lane and I'm in a better spot than they are.
Okay, sweet. Who's that here? Michael? Okay, I'd like to call the, uh, we on? Okay, I'd like to call the, uh, we on? Okay, I'd like to call this April 18th, 2018, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board to Order. Before we get started on the evening, I would like to remember Jonathan Fairchild. His death is a loss to the Oyster River community, and our deepest sympathies go out to his parents, Gregory and Karen, to his sisters Olivia and Carolyn, and to his brother Taylor. I would also like to express my appreciation to the administrative and high school staff who responded to this tragedy. A crisis team came together within a couple of hours of the news that Monday and carried out a thoughtful and compassionate plan to support students at the high school. So I'd like to thank you, Dr. Morris, and the team that you worked with. I know it's tough to deal with that, and I think you folks did a fabulous job. And I know you have some comment yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. And clearly, this has been a tragic event for our high school and for the family. And I do want to emphasize Tom's words in terms of supporting the family in their time of loss. They have been an incredible group of people to work with during, you know, their most tragic loss. So I do want to also thank all the community members who reached out to us. We certainly had words of encouragement and support. And we also had emails that challenged why we did the work the way we did it. And so I thought I'd just take a few minutes to talk about that. So we did and do have a crisis team, as Tom alluded to. When we heard about the loss, that team was in place within no more than 30 minutes. And they worked together until about 10:30 that night. And in the next morning, we had the New Hampshire Behavioral Health Response Team on place, in place, to support our students and to support our staff. Throughout this process, we had professional advice and guidance, not the least of which was our own counseling department, our own psychologists, and the administrators on the crisis team, and the teachers on the team. This particular event had the unusual element of the posting by Jonathan on social media of his intents. And unfortunately, it also meant that literally hundreds of our students read his thoughts just before he died. And many, many of our staff, most of us, have never experienced anything like that. And certainly, our young men and women in the high school haven't experienced anything like that. So it was difficult because it was a very publicly broadcasted intent. And I want to give credit to the Durham Police Department. Holly Malaski, our SRO, spent five hours with Instagram and with the FBI trying to take that down. I will tell you that Snapchat took it down relatively quickly, but it took five hours in the Federal Bureau of Investigation to have it taken down. But of course, it's too late because hundreds of our students had already seen it and many adults in the community. We don't go right into a student assembly during crisis, and there's very good reasons for that. Our students, like the adults in our school system and like the adults in our community, are all in different places. And to bring all of our students into one room is not the recommended approach by the professionals we work in. If you think about it, there are students who absolutely saw Jonathan's intent on social media. There are students who never saw it. There are students who are close friends. There are students who didn't know him. So if you bring a collection of young people into a room and talk about suicide, there is a vulnerable population in that room. And one of the things that you're trying to prevent is copycats, meaning that in a population as big as ours of 800 students, there is some very vulnerable students. And so part of the emails that were received last week was, "You gotta do this assembly. You've gotta do it now." I just want to share with everyone that would be contrary to the best advice of those professionals in this field. And it wasn't that we were trying to hide anything. We actually were trying to deal with a very tragic issue in a very forthright and honest way. So, you know, Tom was very gracious in thanking me. I do have to thank my staff. They worked tirelessly to support the kids. And part of the process we used is to bring our whole faculty together that morning at 7 o'clock and give them the information because there were faculty who, you know, basically just went home that night, fell asleep, and didn't have any knowledge other than the one brief communication I put out that night. And we brought everybody up to speed. And then we had NAMI, and we had behavioral health people here, as well as our own counselors, as well as counselors and psychologists from our other buildings. We had offers to support from other school systems. We felt like we were well-staffed for dealing with the issue, and so we went forward. We also tried to provide parents through our communications. Todd and I worked very hard on every single communication. In each communication, we tried to provide not just where we were in the process, but also resources. And so I hope that those were useful to families and the community at large. Bottom line is, we lost a precious soul last week. We all feel that. We feel for the family. And I think that probably is really what I wanted to say this evening, so.
So we have a motion to approve of the agenda. And there's one addition that should be on here under Actions, the approval of the spring volunteer coaches. That should be there. Are there other changes to the agenda? I have a motion to approve the agenda without addition. Second by Denise. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The student app in favor. Public comment. Can I get a show of hands? How many people would like to speak? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Okay, I'm gonna hold it to half an hour, so everybody has two minutes. So you may want to look at your remarks to make sure you can hold them within two minutes. Okay, thank you.
I got more than two minutes, but we'll see. I'm not gonna talk about this as much. I'm Dean Revine from Lee. It's been a pretty awful month in the district so far. The tragic loss of the boy. My condolences, deep condolences go out to his friends and family. This one, everyone has never seen the community so sad. It's awful. You know, we really appreciate the communication we get from you guys, but when I'm in this state, I get a bunch of rumors that kids tell me things, adults tell me things, and, you know, we hear more official things from the news than you guys. I'll just say that we had our mental health, our mental wellness report at the last meeting with a three-tiered system for identifying at-risk students. And I would say, this is really an emergency. Let's get that done. Let's get it going. Let's do more. We need to, this is, I can't think of a bigger issue. The other news is, if I read it correctly, a conspiracy to assault Dan's daughter because she's a girl playing baseball in the league.
I'm sorry. The issue of Dan's daughter is not a board issue, so.
I am relating to the board. We have a relationship with the Oyster River Youth Association. We need to make clear to them that until they make it right, we cannot continue that relationship. The towns have a relationship as well. They need to do the same. They need to investigate. They need to sever their relationship with any coaches. They need to show us a policy that they're handling this, and then we can resume our relationship with them. We should be contacting the New Hampshire Office of Civil Rights. Finally, if there's any coaches out there, hey, all the time, not to judge the players by what's under their clothes. We're judging them by how they play. And also to the parents, we're judging the kids on, we're gonna love our kids, our support, no matter what team they play for. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Pivel, and I live on Bibby Road in Durham. Just a point of clarification, this is getting a lot of feedback. And second point of clarification, if I want to talk about the cell phone policy, is now the appropriate time. Okay, thank you. I have two children in the school system. One is a junior in high school, and the other is in third grade. So we sort of sandwiched the middle school. I'm in support of the cell phone ban policy that we're working on. But I'd like to speak specifically to one aspect in the draft that I saw, which was the allowance to use a personal device. It is the teacher's discretion for educational uses. I think that we, you've heard us speak about this before, but the point is important, and I'm going to reiterate it, that when you put the pressure of having a personal device on the student as an educational resource, that creates inequitable inequity in the classroom. So there are children who don't have access to these devices. There are children that do. There are children that don't have access because their parents can't afford them, and they don't need to be worried that maybe I'm not gonna get my homework done because I can't do this, or maybe I can't participate in class fully because I don't do that. That puts the wrong kind of pressure on these students. There are other students who go to school and don't have access to their phones because their parents have said, "You don't have access to your phone at school. That's not what you need. You don't need to have that to be successful." And anecdotally, my daughter in high school sometimes does not have use of her cell phone. And there are times even at the high school where that puts her at a disadvantage to other students because she doesn't have access to a personal device in the classroom. And I think that's really unfortunate.
Okay, thank you.
My last point, I'll keep short. And that is that other schools in our region are providing students with school-supported devices, and that would be a really great alternative to allow educational resources with technology in their classroom.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Renham. I live in Durham. I have two children. One is a second grader at Last Way, and one is a preschooler. And I'd also like to comment on your cell phone policy. You've heard from me before. I wrote you in the fall with a concern about the previous policy and encouraging you to review the policy. And I really appreciate the fact that the board has taken the time to do that. And I also appreciate the fact that at this point, you have set out to have an all-day school ban. But I'm concerned, as Jennifer Pivel was as well, about this exception to use that teachers can decide when cell phones can be used. In addition to being a parent, I also have a doctorate in education. I was a former middle school teacher, so I'm familiar with the research. And there is not any research that says that our children will be smarter or more successful if they have a personal device with them in the classroom. If teachers need their students to access the internet or use computers, we should make them available to all students. So I would encourage you to really think about creating a policy that is equitable and one that teaches our children that they don't need a cell phone with them all day to be smarter or to have more friends. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Jelson. I'm a member of New Hampshire. I have two students in the school district. I'm a kindergarten and a third grader. So she'll be in middle school, fifth grade. Basically, I'm saying the same thing that the two other folks have spoken out before me. My concern about the cell phone policy, my concern about the educational loophole. One of the things I keep on seeing repeatedly in the school district is a probably inadvertent emphasis on the have and the have-nots. This is an inadequate policy that is giving more power to people who are able to afford it. Even though this school district has a comparatively extremely low number of people who are on free and reduced lunch, it is not a non-zero number. So the thing is, is I can guarantee these people in this school district, we cannot afford those devices, and you're creating a have-and-have-not situation. And that's just not, I think we can find a different way of doing it to make it so it's more equitable. So it's a reiteration of people saying, "Oh," but I haven't spoken here before, and I want to let you know that it's not just people you see.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Belle McGeach-Mayer. I live here in Durham. I reiterate what everyone's said about the hope to ban cell phones valid at the middle school. I'd like to approach it from a little bit different perspective. There may be some parents that say, "Hey, but I really wanna have access to my kid. What if I need to get in touch with them?" I think we need to get rid of the fallacy that the only way that parents can be in touch with their children is through a text. I do think that every child's right to having attention from a teacher should not be trumped by maybe one parent's desire to text them during class or, you know, in between classes. I do think the systems that work really great in the elementary school system, where we contact the office when there's a change or a need, is something that we should be doing for our children in the middle school as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
You see, Terrell, Durham, I just want to reiterate and thank you for the hard work that you've done, the research that you did at other schools, as well as the smaller contributions. I too would like to address the argument that you might hear against changing the current policy, the argument of we need to be able to text with our middle schoolers during the day because our schedule changes or their schedule changes. If other parents do not want their child to have a cell phone, they should not buy them one. Right? Where that's an argument that maybe you've heard already. First, and just three points. I first of all get the need for flexibility. We all have crazy lives. Schedules change. There's an appropriate time and place to communicate, not emergency plans. My kids can't barge in when I'm working from home. They wait respectfully. You are. I try to help them wait respectfully. I don't interrupt their practices, their playdates. It's an imperfect analogy, but texting with children at school before they're developmentally mentally ready to multitask is like waking them up in the middle of the night with new information about how we'll spend our morning. It might be easiest for me to tell them right away, but the downside of interrupting their good night's sleep outweighs the inconvenience of waiting. If there's an emergency change of plans, I know I can call the office, and it will be delivered. Second, research tells us that the mere presence of a cell phone, even if it's off, reduces the attention and cognitive capacity. If I've trained my child to expect my text, he'll be able to focus less in class. Or I might not text regularly, but his peers will. Think of all those vibrating texts and social media posts coming in during class. And as a teen, I think, "I can't check my messages in class," so I start thinking about what each new one could possibly say. And when class is over, I immediately put my face to my screen instead of connecting with others face-to-face and building empathy. We know from a research study that teens who spend five hours or more a day online are 71% more likely than those who spend less than an hour a day to have at least one suicide risk factor. That's depression, thinking about suicide, making a suicide plan, or attempting suicide. That insisted phone that's vibrating or waiting to be checked between classes keeps the phone in its online world front and center. And just finally, oh, again, returning to the sleep analogy. A phone-free school day is like a good night's sleep. A time for the brain to focus on what the brain should be focusing on, both learning and building happy, healthy relationships. Finally, when we're talking about the school day, it is absolutely false that this is an individual, fair, nice decision to allow cell phones into their child's life. School culture affects everyone. Bullying, depression, suicide affect everyone. Classroom distraction, reduce cognitive capacity for some students, affects what and how teachers can teach all students.
Yuzi, I'm sorry, your time is up.
All right. Thank you very much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Yuzi.
My name is Micah Stark. I live in Durham. I have two children, one in Willamette, one in middle school in sixth grade. When I was before this board a few weeks ago to talk about the cell phone policy, one of the things I emphasized was the, one of the aspects that I like about this district, I like about Durham, I like about living near a research university, is a historical tendency to rely on best practice in research to make sound decisions. I appreciate the board taking emphasis issue. On the face of it, the policy that you drafted sounds good, but unfortunately, as has been pointed out by the other parents who have spoken for me, the loophole that has been created, I think renders the policy useless and basically leaves the existing policy in place. Allowing teachers to have the discretion for quote-unquote "educational purposes" brings up not only the equity issues, but all of the research that Yuzi cited that I think you're all familiar with. So I will say that I'm disappointed at the size of the loophole that's been created. And I would really ask that the board go back and think about what you've heard from the parents, what you've learned from other school districts. It still baffles me that in 2018, we're having to push, parents in this community are having to push this issue so hard. That makes no sense.
Micah, could you sign the sheet, please?
Hi, I'm Amy Sterndale. I have a fifth grader and a child at Mass Way. I'm just here to reiterate what I've heard since I walked in late from the Otter's Dinner down the hall, that I absolutely hope that we have a bell-to-bell policy. As Micah said, the loophole makes the entire policy irrelevant. I have to carry my phone as a sixth grader all day, every day, because my teacher might ask me for it, and if they ask me for it, I want to have it. That also gives me access to my social media and write other things, my chance to text my friends during the day. As a 48-year-old, I have problems with my cell phone. I have problems with my own distraction when it is on me. I cannot imagine what it would have been like to have been an 11, 12, or 13-year-old having to manage that along with my darn day. So I, my son will not have a cell phone, and I hope that there's not a policy that ever makes him feel less when he's in a classroom. So if there's a need for electronic device, I love electronic devices, and I wear that to appropriate, excellent. But he sure as heck better have the same ones everyone else in the class. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Bromley. We live in Durham, and we have a fourth grader and a seventh grader. And I just wanted to start by thanking administration and the staff for what a great job they've done in caring for students and staff this week, similarly of recent events. So thank you for your efforts, Dr. Morris.
You're welcome.
As a teacher at Greenland Central School, I've just spoken before about the fact that Greenland has a bell-to-bell policy of no cell phones in our classroom. It's never come up at a staff meeting in the seven years I've been there. It's not an issue. Our kids use technology a lot, but it's all school devices that are monitored, that we know what's being used. It's equal opportunity for all students. And the junior high kids seem to really accept it. It's not a problem. Greenland Central has over 400 students. We have two secretaries who man the phones. They do a really great job with that. And never have I walked down and they're overwhelmed by phone calls and a change of plans. It's an office that seems organized, and they're able to handle all the communications that come in and out. So just wanted to affirm and dispel any worries about how we handle all the changes and schedules and things like that. Most of the secretaries are really great at being able to do that. So I would encourage you guys to look at the loophole that has been created. As an educator, I just felt like I need to say, I do trust the educators in our classrooms. They're really great. I think they wanna use technology really well. So I just don't want them to feel offended that we don't think they can handle when to use these cell phones. That's not it. It's the haves and have-nots. It's what's on those devices that matters, not necessarily how the teachers are using them. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Good job, Elijah, Durham resident, three students at Willamette. First of all, just want to thank you for the baseline already put together, having separate policies, both managed versus personally connected devices. I think it's the right approach. The loophole, as has been called, the educational purposes as defined by a teacher. When I first read that, I heard about that, and I thought about a comment that Dr. Morris made, I think it was on the 21st, where he said something along the lines of, "The first question on any policy is can we enforce it?" So imagine you're a student whose phone's been off for the last four hours. You're now told, "Right at 1:00, we're teaching, and you've gotta open up that phone to use it for educational purposes." Now, I don't know about you, but if I turn my phone off for four hours, when I turn it back on, I get alerts all over the place. It's gonna be very difficult to have that student focus on the task at hand, what alerts from Snapchat, texts, Facebook, email, et cetera, popping up and not wanting to take a quick look at it. You also don't know that student's browser history. You don't know whether or not it's a secure device, and yet we're allowing that device to now be brought into the fold. So I would urge you again to consider that do not leverage this last bullet as a potential stopgap until you get to that fully managed environment. Use it as an opportunity when you're looking to create that managed device policy, to create it the right way and to stop bringing those proper devices into the classroom. If you look at some of the, up some of the school districts I referenced before, Wellesley in Massachusetts, Hanover, Bedford, Boe, and Wyndham, all have zero tolerance policies. There were many others that I do agree did have that loophole built in. But as I mentioned, when you think about some of these, think about the need to be able to enforce that, have the teacher ensure it's then turned off after they leave that classroom, and all of the other components that go with a VYFD program, including integrating a variety of devices, making sure the teachers are aware of them. It brings in still a lot of challenges to then put on that teacher and be able to enforce. So I just ask you to think of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep you up time for one more comment tonight. Kathy?
Hi, everybody. I wanted to start with a few thank yous. Also, thank you for your field trips to other schools and looking into other policies. Thank you to the district for Monday night hosting Debbie Irving for the Oyster River Community Reads Talk. That was really wonderful for the greater community, not just school folks. And I also want to thank the middle school and high school principals and the district leaders for allowing the walkout on Friday and empowering students to organize themselves. So thank you for trusting them that way. Just a couple things about the phone. Yes to all of that. The equity issue leaped out in all caps, you know, haves and have-nots. The equity issue leaped out in all caps, you know, haves and have-nots and all that, so I won't iterate everyone's articulate points. Looking at it as an educator, though, I, there's a glitch for me. I would never want to take away a tool from a teacher. And what it sounds like tonight, it's not, it's smartphones, personal devices, and social media that is really under people's skin. And as a, so as an educator, I don't want to take away teachers' power. As a community member, I'm wondering why, I'll pay tax, I'll pay an extra dollar, I don't know, in taxes, whatever it takes, why don't we have devices for all the kids? So that, my husband teaches in Portsmouth, his team, he's a sixth grade teacher, they have 30 devices on a cart, Chromebooks and iPads. So anytime a teacher needs to have a device for technology in the classroom, they just bring in the cart, so kids don't have to take out their phones and turn it into a have-and-have-not. So, and then also, there's this little girl in fifth grade, Lily Van Lege, who's internationally known as a young social media, she knows how to use social media, she's a creator, not a consumer, and I'm wondering if we haven't tapped some local resources to just see what she does and what she can, how, ways she can support children.
Thank you.
There's a lot to provide. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay. Okay, we move to the approval of the minutes. We need a motion to approve the March 14th, the 2018 regular minutes. Brian?
Motion to approve the March 14th, 2018 minutes.
Moved by Brian, seconded by Denise. Changes to that. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Sorry.
I think that was, we're going back to the March 14th. I was not here for that.
Oh, wait a minute. Can we go back to a change?
Okay, change. Denise has a change.
It's been so long, I forgot. It's just a misspelling. It was spoke instead of spoke, so just so that that's fixed, that's all. That was a long time ago. I think, I know you know where it is.
So you were here.
I was not here.
So you're, okay. Okay. Are we ready to vote on that? Is that changed? All those in favor, raise your hand. Five in favor, those opposed, one opposed, and one abstaining. Okay. Do you have that?
Back.
Okay. Do you want to have a motion to approve the April 4th regular minutes? Denise?
A motion to approve the April 4th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second, seconded by Brian. Changes to that? Denise?
It's just, all it is is a capitalization. On page nine, the movie Resilience, resilience should be capitalized because it's the name of a movie. So that was like, that where my comment, I recommended the movie, just capitalize it, that's all. That's all.
One more. On page 10, under the board action, it was the first paragraph there, it says, "Motion to approve six dash zero dash one, Kenny Roder." And I think the point is that Kenny abstained.
Kenny Roder should have abstained in there?
It should say abstained, Kenny.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on this, right? For the regular?
Yes.
Okay. With those changes, any other changes? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, six in favor, all those opposed? Keep standing?
I'm saying I didn't get to read them.
Okay.
I'm abstaining. I didn't get to read them.
Okay. And we have two sets of non-public minutes. I'm going to go with you, just approve both. Those is blocking, if somebody wants to split that. Is that all right? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve both sets? Brian?
Motion to approve non-public, both sets of non-public minutes, 4-4-18.
Moved by Brian, is her second? Seconded by Denise. Changes?
Yeah, for the first point, I believe that Catherine Flord was also present for it.
Yeah, she was. Other changes? Did you hear that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that passes. Okay, movements to announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Too fast on me there.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on the progress of the football cooperative. Last Wednesday, Susan Villo and I went in front of the classification committee, and they approved our cooperative proposal as a vote of 7 to 0. So the next step is to meet with the council, and that happens on May 17th. If it clears that, then it'll be official.
And that will be, set us up for participation in the fall then, right?
Yeah, in the fall.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other announcements, commendations, comments from the district? Hearing none, now from the board. Denise?
I have two. The first one, I attended the Social Media Awareness Parent Education Night on April 9th, and I just wanted to thank the Durham Police Department for hosting, along with the high school and middle schools. Robert Hackinson did a fantastic job of both providing information, and as a magician, of really making the point that things aren't always as they appear. So I felt like it was really effective, and hopefully the students during the school day found that to be, you know, a powerful presentation as well. The second thing, I just want to thank the Oyster River Community Reads, all the sponsors. I attended several of the events that have been held over the course of the past few months pertaining to the issue of racism, and it just wasn't as outstanding. They just did an outstanding job, and culmination was the author visit the other night, which was, was also excellent. So thanks, and also the high school, the school district being one of the sponsors for that. I think it was definitely a very good investment.
I had a chance, I guess it was last Saturday, to go to the Moheramet Pancake Breakfast. Been going to that for an awfully long time. I can report that Dennis looks great. Apparently, the year off has been good to him. It was, I thought that was really neat this time, they, you know, forced you to go through this side entryway, and you got to see all the students' work, where they did all the calculations on how much they collected each day, and there were these really cool art things that made like the little sap collector that, you know. So it was just a great, great event, and the middle school jazz band, of course, playing. So I think my big takeaway from it is that I was really happy to see how well that expansion of the gym really works. It looks great. I think Jim Rosicky did a fabulous job working us through that, and so Moheramet really looks, looks great.
Brian?
Just Pam Felder, Pam Felder did another great job with the kids, with Peter Pan Jr. Unfortunately, because I would be here, I could not see it tonight, but I can assure you, if it's like out of the other place she's done, that was outstanding, but the kids always had fun doing it. Unfortunately, my son couldn't be there, he was out sick today, so, but he did the school version one, but Pam always puts on a great show, and she does a great, this thing, you can make no, she does a great job.
Okay, great. Do you have the assistant superintendent's report?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to let you know about a couple of things. The middle school is the first school in the district to get started with the standardized testing, we began last week. All of their students are doing the ELA portion of the test before vacation. On that, it was in May, they will do the math portion. Both elementary schools will be doing testing in the first week or two of May, so that will be coming up. In the high school, we'll be doing the science, the entry SAS towards the end of the month of May. So all of that is happening over the next, you know, four weeks, so just wanted to let people know that it's happening. And it's, the first four days we have of it have gone flawless, and technology's worked. Teachers are doing a great job. Jay has pushed computer carts all over the, most of the floors of the middle school. So the middle school this afternoon, watching you rush carts all over the building to make sure they're in the right places for testing pretty far. So nice work, Jay. I got a little exercise, Jay. Don't forget to push one of the, up a ramp. So, there's that. Second thing I want to just, I said that again today, Reach is, the registration process opened up a week and a half ago. Tremendous interest right away. I encourage parents, if you're contemplating signing up, take a look at the catalog, get your kids signed up as soon as possible, because activities do fill up fairly quickly. A lot of very popular camps. Just to remind you again, it's a great program. It's a five-week, starting the week of July 9th, running through first week of August. Basically, it has the potential for it to be a five-day-a-week program over the summer. The school district runs enrichment programming Monday through Thursday mornings. Durham Parks and Rec, great partner to work with, with the school district, runs an afternoon traditional camp program, and on Fridays, they run these great field trip experiences. All of that can be signed up for in our catalog. It's one-stop shopping, you pay one place, and all works great. And in the middle of all this, Doris Demers is running a free lunch program for all school-aged children. Last year, we served, you know, 70 days, 75 kids a day. So it's a, it's a great program, and I encourage people to take part in that. Last thing I did want to just quickly mention, it's a work in progress, and it does somewhat relate to some of the conversations we've heard from many of the speakers here talking about the cellphone policy. Obviously, one of the implications that is being discussed is if we can get ourselves to have more of a one-to-one computer technology ratio in the district, that will be, will certainly do a lot to address the issues that are raised by teacher use of cellphones. All of our buildings in the district are currently going through the process of developing a kind of technology plan for how they would like to see technology rolled out in the classrooms. And I know why Dr. Morris has talked a little bit about that, but we will be looking at a multi-year kind of approach to try to get ourselves to a one-to-one concept, particularly at the high school level, where that seems to be a really valuable thing. So please know that is something that teachers are working on. I would also mention, but I think, just again, I know we're going to be talking about this a little bit relating to the policy, but certainly the educational exception that is currently in draft, I would just note that that's what I would perceive to be a transitional thing, as we move towards a more comprehensive approach of a one-to-one process, because the more devices and the more training our teachers get, we'll be able to transition them to other things. So I would just kind of put that out there, that a lot of the work that was alluded to in the comments is underway, and we've got lots of excited teachers ready to do that work, and you'll be hearing about the policies that have to make that happen. Probably have an expertise in planning. Okay, thanks.
Also, like Monday, the Durham Town Council approved Rachel's brand-new van, so it's going to be a super-nice van to take people on field trips.
Yes, yes. I'm on very good pace of her shining event.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. So a lot of things have been happening. I just want to point out tomorrow night, there is a strings concert at the high school. What makes this particular strings concert unique is it is actually the culminating activity of Andrea Von Owen, our strings teacher, for her master's degree. So by, she's got professionals participating as well as our students, so it should be one of, another Cracker Jack performance, and I would encourage board members to attend. Her concerts are stellar. Going back to Kathy Collins' note and Denise's on the community read, that was an amazing effort by our community to really bring the issue of white privilege front and center. If you saw their pamphlet at the beginning to the end, it was chock-full of really amazing activities. Their culminating activity is May 3rd. So they would like to have one more conversation with the community, and that conversation would be, what's next? So we spent a year with Debbie Irving's book, so they want to get feedback from the community as to where they would like, where would we like to take the effort in the coming year. On May 15th, Andrew Smith, Andrew Smith is the gentleman who provided all the diversity training for our 400 staff, will be coming back to the district in the evening to talk to parents. And the theme for that evening would be how to talk about race. So that will be our culminating activity related to all of the work that we've done this year around diversity. I just want to report back, this has been a recurring conversation with the board on House Bill 193, which is intended to provide money to a private scholarship fund to redirect public money to private schools. That came out of the Finance Committee, seven to one, to go to a study, which means basically that they're not supporting it getting passed by the full House. However, before we let our guard down, I would let you know that the legislature in Concord has overridden their own subcommittee several times this session. So this bill is still alive until it either passes or has been summarily sent off to their study committee by the end of the session. So we need to be ever vigilant on that particular one. I also wanted to point out that Lori Buckley, who is our Masway Food Service Manager, was named Nutrition Manager of the Year. So it's pretty cool, another great recognition for our food service program. Those are my reports tonight, Tom.
Thank you, Jim. So we have the business administrator about the fiscal year '17 audit.
So this year, we decided to take a little different approach, given you the management letter. Normally, we have Patrick here to go through the statement and give you all the highlights of all the great, wonderful financial documents that they prepare, which I know you're really sad I cannot have that with you, but it's still gonna be, because I think the most important piece of it is the management letter, where they tell you if there are any internal weaknesses, any internal control issues. In their shared letter, there are none, which is nice. They're just talking about priority and recommendations. One of them is in regards to the threshold for the single audit, which I'm happy to say, we're going to be under that threshold, so we won't meet that on any one.
We should say unhappy to say.
Well, unhappy to say, it's okay.
Happy for you, sad for the district.
True, true. And then the only other one was the unfunded liability, the OPAP, which is for post-employment benefits, just preparing for that, which we have done. I'm happy to take any questions. You did get the audits posted on the website, if you have anything you want to review.
Just want to point out, Sue, just in terms of the issue of not having to do the federal audit, that means for the first time, the district is actually receiving less than $750,000 from the federal government.
But it used to be 500, so remember, the threshold has been raised, we're now under that threshold, so.
So our federal funds continue to go down, but that saved us the effort of going through the audit, because we were spending a lot of money for that audit for very little gain.
So do you have any questions? Certainly, if you want to call me anytime, if you have any questions. I will tell you that when you look at the audit, it doesn't relate a whole lot to what you approved for a budget and revenues. They're kind of tucked into a lot of different pockets, so you have to kind of pull everything out. And I do go with over at the 10, we look at our financial reports and make sure that everything that they're reporting is what we're reporting, and everything's in line, and they're just.
And if any board member wants to go over the audit in detail, just set up an appointment with Sue, and we can do that.
Questions? Thank you.
Student Center report?
So Monday, April 9th, that was two weeks ago, we had shortened classes because we had Senate speeches and also class meetings. So people who were running for student government were allowed to give a brief speech for why they were running and why people should vote for them. And it kind of flip-flopped, so while classes, some grades are doing that, the other classes were in class meetings, which consisted of that social media presentation that you mentioned with the magician, which was intriguing and interesting. Probably the best assembly presentation we've had so far, in my opinion at least. Friday, April 13th, we had Senate elections, so people were allowed to actually vote for their student government. And so there's a National History Day competition, and this year, we sent five teams to the state competition. So there's a school, a school competition first, five teams move on and go to the state competition at Plymouth. Unfortunately, the teams in first and second place go to Nationals, and we had two teams placed third. The robotics team also had a competition last weekend, I want to say, and they were able to compete. able to compete in the semifinals, which was really exciting for them, and they did very well. The debate club also had a competition last Saturday, they didn't move on, but they did do very well. The student athletics leadership team, SALT, is accepting applications right now, and Mr. Lathrop knows all about that. And in very exciting news, there are two trips going for April break. So today, a group of students left for Tanzania, and they're going to do a service trip there over April break, which they're super excited about. And on Saturday, a group of students will leave for a trip to France and Spain, which they are also very excited about. Of course, vacation is next week, and the walkout is on Friday, which is something that people have been talking about a lot. And I just want to thank the administration and the teachers for how everything that occurred last week was dealt with, because I think it went, I don't want to say it went well for the students, but I think it was dealt with to the best of the administrators' and teachers' ability, which I really, really appreciate.
Thank you. Okay, last day of school?
Okay, so, I sent you a memo on the last day of school, and you know, I think it's important just to put it in context that our parents are waiting for you to make this decision, and remember, all calendar decisions are yours. So I'm getting calls, the administrators, the building level are getting calls, you know, when's the last day of school, when's the last day of school, when's the last day of school? And you can understand that, because we've had so many snow days that it's hard for people to get their handle around when the last day of school is. So I sent you a memo, and then I actually had some discussions with others, and then wanted to be to kind of do this in a two-tiered approach. So if we go to Friday, making Friday the...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, it's the last day of school, we will have compensated for every single snow day, plus the two hurricane days in the fall. Remember, we had the downed cable over at Massway, we couldn't get the buses past 1:55, it took us two days to find out who owned the pole and, you know, to get it all handled. So literally, we'll have about, depending on how you look at, we'll have made up for every single storm day, which would probably, if you do it by hours, puts us over the recommended state level by, like, sixty? How many?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, I was going to say sixty, so fifty-eight hours. So a few people, when they saw the public agenda, approached me and said, you know, what happened to the waiver? So the waiver was denied. The reason it was denied is because we had way over the state requirement. And that's what they put in writing, you don't need a waiver, right now, your board controls your agenda, you could literally have stopped teaching school by our standards, 165 days into the school year. And I said, well, that's just not how we do things in Oyster River. However, so here's, here's the what-if. This small group suggested that perhaps we end school on Wednesday rather than Friday, since we do have, since we're so far beyond what the state expects. And the argument is, you know, parents would like, you know, to see school end midweek as opposed to the end of the week. It would allow us to do two, if we do that, well, I'll just keep it simple. So Friday or Wednesday? Friday, every single last day is compensated for. Wednesday, you could look at it as saying, the hurricane days, we're waiving. So I'll put it there, let you ask your questions, and hopefully, we can make this decision tonight so that we can let the parents know tomorrow.
So if it's Friday, then the teachers have to, how many more days do we have to do then?
The teachers would owe us two days if it's Friday, because we have, so you have the student days and you get the staff contract. Staff contract, if we end on Friday, the teachers by contract owe us two days. If we end on Wednesday, by contract, they owe us four days. So I should probably talk about that a little bit, just to play the scene.
That's part of the package.
Sure. So, you know, over the years, Todd and I have had what I call R&amp;D proposals from staff, and they've always been rich, and they've always been, you know, really important work that we've tied into district goals and building goals. So I've been having conversations with the Guild about whether they would be interested in us personalizing the last two days of school, where Todd and the building principals would articulate what the district goals are and the building goals are, and allow teachers to craft plans around that work. And so what we would do at that point is, they would make, a teacher would make a proposal, the principal would say, yeah, this makes sense to the building goal or our district goal, they'd sign off on it. That work would be done sometime between the time we end the student year and August 15th. So the historic way we've done things is one-size-fits-all, we bring everybody in, we run a workshop day, and all is good with the world. And, you know, it's been a very successful model. But then Todd and I started thinking about, well, we've also had another successful model, which is, we put responsibility on the teachers to define what their needs are, these would be the building goals and the district goals. They articulate what they would like to accomplish based on that, they do that work, and we have held them accountable to the contract, but we haven't necessarily held them accountable to being all in one place at one time. I floated that with Guild leadership, they were pretty excited. I floated it with various teachers, including some high, some high school teachers today, they were really, like, super impressed that we'd be thinking that way. So if we end on Wednesday, the teachers owe us four days. So Todd and I thought we would run the traditional model for Thursday and Friday, and then this non-traditional model of accountability over the course of the summer for the other two days. If we end on Friday with the students, then we still would like to do the non-traditional model and probably a hybrid, where we would do a schedule for the teachers on Monday and Tuesday, but if teachers wanted to start their break with the students, they would put together a proposal, much like I've talked about, that would be held accountable to district and building goals. And again, we think it would be an amazing opportunity for our staff to articulate their needs on a personal level for growth, but tie it into the board's goals or the building's goals. So maybe it sounds a little complicated, and probably it will be, but I think that the complication involved would make our staff feel like, you know, we really understand and trust them, and we will hold them accountable to their time, but they get to define what the work is.
What day, when you set up the schedule originally, what day did you anticipate the end, the end of the year?
Well, I mean, if we had no, if we had no snow days, it would have been seven from 22, so 15th?
June 14th is the 178th day of snow days.
Yeah.
The fifth count, which was 21st. And then we took the two P D days.
It would have been the week before. So, so the thought process is, we could do it on Wednesday, end the student year on Wednesday, or end the student year on Friday. In both cases, we have ample time in the classroom, way beyond the state minimums.
My own sense is to bring students in that lateness, you know, that kind of year to an air-conditioned building, I don't see a whole lot of benefit of going those extra two days, so I would probably in favor of finishing on Wednesday.
If we finish on the Wednesday, is that a half-day also?
Yeah, traditionally, we would run it as a half-day, but we don't have to. I mean, that's been the tradition, if we're going to end on Wednesday instead of Friday, I'm sure people would get it. But I would say that the board has had discussions about that in the past, and the half-day becomes, if you don't have it, it becomes problematic in terms of closing up the year. So my recommendation is to run that Wednesday just the way we would run any end of the day and run it as a half-day. I'm in favor of the Wednesday one, because, I mean, it's ironic that we're, we're talking about the academic year, we've moved away from days to hours, and I think by moving to this, we're beginning to think of the professional development, moving away from like the static, full-day thing to more project-based, which I think is the way we should probably go. So I think this is just an opportunity for us to test that out, and I think that it, that what can be done from that, and there's no shortage of goals in terms of like homework and mental health and all kinds of things that we have, but I think the time can be used really effectively, so I'm in, I'm in favor of the Wednesday.
I just want to point out that my birthday is the 20th.
There we go. Okay, so let's go to the 19th.
Good, good birthday present.
Is it your 18th?
No, my 27th.
Would have been more Paul Fargum if you turned.
I guess, I think the point question is, what is the value of 1% of the school year? Because we're talking about taking a whole percent out of the school year by doing this.
So our grade, what are grades in?
Well, grades would be determined by your decision tonight when they're due. How many days in advance do you close your books, Suzanne?
The day that it ends is the day that the grades close. We'll have any discharge on the way in, the high school has exams.
Yeah. So exams will be over by...
So depending on when the last day of school is, we will count backwards to when exams will be.
Okay.
And then grades close on the last day of exams. And, and when, when the grades close, we then start working on the process of storing and distributing and all of that. That usually takes us approximately a week to do that.
So, I should know this, but do you have classes then after the exams then?
No, the exams will end the year, so we'll have four days of exams, and then we'll close the year.
Okay, okay.
So either way, Patty has to have exams on her birthday.
Yes. But if it ends on Wednesday, I only have French, and that's...
This basis of Patty, yeah.
So, I say, like, the question was, what is the value of 1% of the school year? It depends what you do with the 1%. It's like, and so, at the end of the year, at least from my experience, it's kind of a diminishing return, although the finals does kind of hold people's feet to the fire. But if we can come out of this with developing a better professional development model that moves us forward, then the 1% is pretty valuable.
I guess bringing the end of the year forward just makes the last day sooner, and that diminishing return, the excitement about the last day happens a day sooner, and I think you lose...
It starts about the end of May, actually, so.
I find that a little condescending.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Then let's end the school now. I mean, we, we spend well over $100,000 a day to operate the district, to educate kids, and 1% is 1%. I'm not sure that whittling away 1% is a good idea. I am totally in favor of the concept of, of independent project development. I think that's, I think there's a lot of possibility there, but I think we have to be careful about where we vote the school year. I've said before, I would rather we end the school year earlier, but I think we need to do that by adjusting the calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to end the school year on Wednesday instead of Friday.
Move by Al, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Brian?
I just have a clarification question, so are we seeing, please clarify for me, so the last day, the Wednesday, would be the half-day? It would be a half-day, okay.
Discussion on that, further? Revo? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, all opposed? One opposed. Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving to the discussion of the rough draft cellphone policy, this is not a first read.
No.
So I don't know, if you want to explain to us, kind of like, because it's a little confusing, R versus not R.
So, you know, first of all, I want to thank all the parents. It's been an amazing commitment by the parents to really keep this issue in the forefront from the point it was proposed, and actually, you know, if you think about it, it's actually been a two-year journey. It may have gotten a lot more attention this year, but I have to say that, you know, the Broncos brought this before administration, a full school year before it got this kind of attention. And so, I want to, I wanted to thank the parents first. So I think, you know, the first piece of this is, there's a difference between a policy and a procedure. And, you know, the policy, I think, reflects intent, and the intent of this policy is to eliminate cellphones and personal devices. Now, I added that language because cellphones are not the only way that children are, or adults are communicating. I took a phone on my, a call on my watch tonight because that was the convenient way I could do it. So I added the personal devices to clearly articulate that we weren't just talking about smartphones, that there are other ways that personal devices could be brought in. I also wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, you know, even in a bell-to-bell shutdown, if that device is in somebody's backpack and it gets destroyed, the school system owns none of that. We are not taking any responsibility for $1,000 devices or $600 devices, you know, getting slammed in a locker door, or, you know, being dropped with a backpack. So, you know, that was a concern of mine. But then I listened to the passion of the parents, and I listened to the conversation at this, at this board level as the conversation carried through in time, and I think the policy itself, I think, reflects what I heard. And so then, you get to procedures. So the board approves policy, they review procedures. So the procedures really are, how do you make this policy work? Going back to being quoted, you know, a policy that you can't enforce is really not much of a policy, it's sort of like a law that's passed and we all ignore it, and then, you know, what good is the law? So policy really is the law of a school district. And quite frankly, in a court, if there's no law that governs something in a school system, they will turn to policy as the de facto law, all right? So it's very, very powerful. That's why we have a standing policy committee, because we spend a lot of time going through the language of policy, tying it into legal precedents, tying it into other policies. So when you see the policy part, that is what governs me as the superintendent and all of our employees. So procedure is how you implement that policy. And so we did pull out the policies of the various districts that were recommended to us to review, and we looked at them. And, you know, the policies may have reflected very similar language, which is in the draft tonight, but then when you went to their handbooks, or you went to their procedures, or you went to other documents that they produce, the reality is, they were making some sort of exception. Now, is that true 100% of the time? No. But these were many of the policies that were recommended to us to review, and so we did. And Todd and I went through them exhaustively. So we get to the place in the procedures where, what are the exceptions? So clearly, if somebody has an IEP, or a medical 504, or a doctor's order, so what could possibly, what could a personal device be doing for a student to support their medical needs or their learning disabilities? Well, we have students who have to record what's going on in a classroom. They don't have the capacity to write quick enough, they don't necessarily have the processing power. We have students who photograph the, the front board where the teacher has put the assignments. We have students who have very significant diabetes, and we're monitoring their sugar levels on a very... So those exceptions, I didn't hear a word from the parents challenging those exceptions. So I think people get those exceptions. I think the controversy is, do we want to have an exception for classroom teachers? Now, again, I lifted them, I gave you the sources of where I lifted them. And so what's the point tonight? The point tonight is really just to have a conversation among the board. This is not a first read. We have a normal process where we just present a policy, it has its first read, and then two weeks later, normally, we would have a second read, once it's approved in the second read, it is now an official policy. We added an extra step tonight. We added that extra step for the very reason that we needed collectively as a school board to guide me. So, you know, the fact that it's a procedure, which is what we've been talking about tonight is where the parental concern is, doesn't necessarily... is where the parental concern is, doesn't necessarily mean I act in absence of board guidance. I actually work, I see my job as working in concert with board intent. So I think I've got the intent in the policy, though you may challenge that and say, you know, it's not where you want it to be, that's your prerogative. I don't take any piece of the work that I gave you personally. It's really to have the conversation to clarify the board's position. My intent after tonight is to take your directive, your conversation, and draft the policy and the procedures for a first read at our next meeting. So that starts the official process. This is really about making sure that I'm reading the tea leaves correctly, and if I'm not reading the tea leaves correctly, it is a-okay to tell me that. And I'm not going to go home and be all upset, because this is really the conversation starter. That's where I'm at.
Denise?
I just have a question, which I would like to hear about the visits to the various schools. Not necessarily to identify them by name, but just in terms of, you know, you visited these different schools. What, you know, what did you, in terms of your own observations, or in terms of, I know you had an opportunity in some of the schools to talk to faculty or students or administrators, maybe kind of, I would really be interested in hearing about that.
Okay, I have, and I am going to name the schools because it's hard, it's hard to kind of, because they're, they're. So basically, Brian and I and Todd and Jay went to Lebanon and Hanover, and then Todd and Jay and I went to, made a trip to Cooperative Middle School in Stratum and to the Portsmouth Middle School. So those are the four that we visited. So I just have some comments then, and Brian, maybe you could jump in and, you know, comments from the other people. It seemed to me there was a continuum of practices. I think they were all more restrictive than the Oyster Middle School practice. I think if you had a range, we would be more, we allow more things than any of the other four schools we visited. Portsmouth was the most restrictive. It pretty much had a no, you know, no cellphone policy, although we did see one kid using it, I think with teacher permission, so there may be some exceptions, but it was clearly the most strict. The others were more in the middle, allowing some use during the day. None allowed unmonitored cellphone use at lunch and recess. They all pretty much wanted to eliminate that. So that was, that was consistent through the, for the schools. For example, Hanover allows educational use or teacher consent. The Cooperative Middle School in Stratum and Lebanon both allow teacher discretion for educational purposes. That was, and interestingly, the principals at Hanover and Lebanon, if it was their choice, would go toward a more open policy. I thought that was interesting. So there's some debate there. In the schools where teacher had discretion, there was some comment about inconsistency, that certain, certain teachers allowed this and other teachers didn't. You didn't, I didn't hear much complaint about equity, but inconsistency was more what I heard. And at the Cooperative Middle School in Stratum, they said, well, this is going to happen. Some teachers are, you know, uncomfortable with it, don't want it at all, some teachers find uses, so. I was very much interested in parent contact during the day, because we did this little survey in Oyster River Middle School, and just, you know, kind of astounding just the number of parent-student contact during the day, you know. I was, I multiplied it out in my head and figured if, just based on the numbers I saw, how many would, how many individual back-and-forth moments during the day would occur based on the numbers we had? And the number I came up with over a year would be something like 800,000. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going back and forth. And so I was curious about how, how other districts handled that. Portsmouth, you know, if you need to, if you need to contact your parent, you go to the office. If there's a message for you, the office contacts you, they send the message. And I talked to the secretary of Portsmouth Middle School this morning, because I wondered, like, you know, how difficult is this? She said, well, it's part of the job, you may be several a day, but it's manageable. The Middle School in Stratum, they have, they wouldn't deliver the message, they'd have a board, and if you had a message, you'd have to walk past, and they had a kind of central area there, but kind of walk past. And so if you had a message, your name would be on the board, go in the office and get the message. And I didn't, just on the website, at Amherst Middle School, they had one of those, like an electronic thing, kind of like, you know, like, you know, if you're like on the waiting list for a plane, you know? And so your name, if your name was on that, you know, you'd have a message to go into the office. They didn't deliver the messages. But all of them had a strategy to minimize parent-kid contact with the idea, and I think it makes a lot of sense that, you know, like you said, if you opened your message to get from a parent, you get two other messages, you know, you started, started the chain, so. And this would be a big shift for Oyster River Middle School, because I think we, we do have a culture and kind of expectation of parents, you know, to contact their kids during the day. So something to think about. But these other schools have put in place strategies, and they seem to not be overburdening the administration, the staff. A key thing that's mentioned is one-to-one. And how you get to one-to-one, it seemed to me Hanover was ahead of the other school districts that we saw getting to one-to-one. And I think in talking to the kids, because we had, we spent about a lunch break with the kids, but I asked, you know, is there ever any occasion when you need to use your cellphone because the equipment provided you is not adequate? And they thought, and they thought maybe of one case, but it was pretty much, Hanover, I think, has gotten closer to that point where the device you need for your education is provided by the school. Every other school is working to get there. Okay? So that was really a key thing, and it kind of goes with what Todd has said. So Hanover, I think, is pretty, pretty close to eliminating the need for cellphone use for educational purposes, you know, they, I think they've gotten, they've gotten close, close to that point. So I think the bottom line, I don't, I don't know if there's any, I think there's basically a tighter policy at every place than what we saw, but with some exceptions for, you know, at least in three of the four schools for, you know, the exception for educational use. And I, we, I talked to the, I just asked the assistant principal at Stratum, I says, is there an equity problem here? And she says, we really haven't had it, you know, they didn't have the cellphone we provided, and it hadn't occurred, it hadn't risen to be a problem. Brian, I don't know if you?
Well, it was, it was an interesting, I thought it was enlightening, because we started off in Lebanon, where they still have the bell-to-bell ban, but they were looking to bring it back at lunch. And they were getting pushback, parents. We don't want it back at lunch. You know, we'd rather just be bell-to-bell, and we feel safer that way. So we'd walk in the office, there's a phone, kids come in, use it. If they got a call home, same thing, every, similar to ours, where every classroom has a phone. So if you need to relay a message, you come to class, tell so-and-so, you know, their mother's picking them up at 3:00 or whatever. So that was, that was interesting. But Hanover was, was obviously more enlightening, because we got to speak with the kids, and we got to speak with teachers. We actually went into a classroom that was using one-on-one devices, and the teacher actually had the ability on her computer to see what everybody was doing on their one-to-one device. So if somebody was not doing what they were supposed to do, they knew exactly what was, and they went in and could say, hey, you know, matter of fact, the technology person, I forget his title.
Marty something?
Yeah. He actually would be, it would be notified him too, he'd have to make a trip up there if he could, or if he had to, to say, hey, so-and-so is not using, you know, maybe they found a way around the system or something, or they weren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. So then I had the opportunity to take, to talk to a teacher in the same classroom. You were speaking to students, I was talking to teachers in the same classroom. And the teacher, I asked, you know, what do you think of the policy? And she goes, I like the policy. He goes, I don't allow cellphones in my classroom, and it's worked perfectly, I haven't had any issues with it, and I wouldn't change it. And we went into the hallway, there's kids in the hallway using their one-on-one devices, doing, one kid was doing math, doing a math program, problem, and Todd says, what do you do with your iPad? He goes, after I'm done, I video it with my iPad, and I say, you know, this is how I did the formula, this is how I did the problem, and then sends it off to the teacher, and the teacher will say, all right, you did it right, or you did it. It was a great way to, to really see the process. What's meeting at lunchtime with the kids was extremely enlightening, because we really got down really to brass tacks, and asked them about what they thought about the policy, and they said they're fully supportive of it as students. And matter of fact, one student said, I specifically leave it in my locker, because I know it's going to distract me during the day. Those exact words. Where other kids were like, yeah, I'll go in the bathroom, and you know, one kid actually admitted in front of the principal that he was going to the bathroom to use it. One kid said, you know, and we asked, who reaches your cell phone? And they said, nine times out of 10, it's a parent. It's not another student, because it's so the students are using their phones. So that was, that was enlightening. And matter of fact, one of the parents that was texting their child was an administrator of another school.
The school, yeah.
And she was well aware of the, of the, so the problem wasn't necessarily the kids, the problem could be the parents don't understand the rules. So I think, that's why I really support the idea of, if we're going to require any type of electronic devices, that we got to, we need to supply it to the district, and that's why I thought the one-to-one, I think they were only doing it in eighth grade, and they had Chromebooks and everything else for the lower grades that could be issued anytime within the school. They actually took home their iPads. And, you know, they signed at least beginning of the year, and haven't had any issues with it. It's actually been very, very good, they're very happy with it, and I think that's, I think that's a great place to start. But I don't, but there really isn't anything, wasn't any too much leeway in the policies. There was, I believe at Hanover, they did give a tiny bit of leeway, it was kind of off, off the record, because just before we went up there, they had those threats up in Hanover. It was coming out of Canada, they said that Hanover High School was going to be, have an attack of some type, and they couldn't determine if it was Hanover in the answer, or there was like four Hanover High Schools in Canada. So they did let the students just take their phone out, text their parents real quick, say everything's okay, turn it back off, back in the pocket. And that was kind of off the, off the grid, it wasn't an official announcement, but that's about the extent that they ever really give any leeway in that policy, and that was just for emergency purposes. So, I mean, it was, I thought it was great, especially when you hear the kids that, the kids that supported the, that supported the ban. They said, you know, it's perfectly fine, you know, I turn it on, I leave, turn it off, I walk in the door. And they were perfectly fine with that, because they had every need satisfied, and they've been in there, they needed flats. And the stuff they were doing with the iPads, I don't, Todd was asking what they were doing, it was pretty amazing, some of the stuff they were doing. I mean, it blew my mind, so. But I mean, as far as, you know, the parents, there wasn't really any complaint from parents not being able to get a hold of their kids. There was only one parent in that school that did not want their child using an issued iPad. And that was because they don't want them having any exposure to, to devices at all, and they have to accommodate for that, you know, they actually, that kid now has to kind of jump on with somebody else, which still defeats the purpose, but they said that's the only pushback they've had from, from devices.
Excuse me, can I ask a question, Brian? You mentioned the threat and the exception they made for students to text or contact their parents. Did they elaborate all on why? Because I would imagine their school also had the ability to text the same parents.
I think some kids were getting antsy, you know, they heard about it, the parents were calling the office, getting a little antsy, you know, just, you know, what are we doing? One of the things, one of the differences with, with Hanover too, was it's an open school, it's not a secure school. The front doors are wide open, so, which, we walked in, we were like, wow, that was, that was pretty shocking for us. But the school board there says it hasn't been issued, it's around the edge of campus and everything, but it wasn't, you know, it wasn't something I said that happens very often, it happens extremely rarely, and it was just, under those circumstances, they felt was best just to give a tiny bit of a leeway, but they didn't, you know, they don't look good as a violation of the policy, they just, was to make the, keep everyone kind of at ease, because it was such a mass thing. If it was one kid that had an appointment issue, go to the office and use the phone, you know, and the kids were moving, kids were coming in and out of the office all day. So it wasn't, I don't think it was a huge issue being able to do that.
So that's the report of my road trip.
So I really appreciate, again, I like to appreciate all the time that parents have taken to speak and to write to us and to be engaged in the process, and thank you very much for taking the time to visit the schools. I certainly have, you know, shifted in terms of where I am. I feel, one of the things I want to mention that I, that I think is important, is the nouns letter that we received, which, which spoke to the middle school being named a spotlight school, and it commended the middle school on a number, in a number of areas. Actually, one of the areas was on, and I'll read it directly, "Students are encouraged to develop responsible practice with personal technology, and technology use is present, is present not only in teacher-driven instruction, but in student-led activities." So, I mean, this is something that the, you know, National League, New England League of Middle Schools recognizes as very important. So as we move, and I certainly am in favor of moving towards one-on-one, but recognize that there's no way that that could happen right away. I don't want to lose this. So I, I think, in my mind, that we are going to probably need to have some sort of a bridge policy, because otherwise, and I'm, and still, if we, if we do a total ban, then we lose this. We can't use this because we're not there. We don't have the technology in the middle school at this time, and we certainly can't get it there by September, both in terms of the, not only financial, but also the ti, the time, you know, it's extremely time-consuming for our T department as well. So there's no way we can get to that point in time for September, and I don't want to lose this. So I think we're going to have to look at it as maybe a two-step process, is having a policy that is, that we use for now, so that we still have the ability for students to continue the important work they're doing. And then once we are further along in this one-on-one, you know, then we can probably scale back. And so that's just my feeling about it, because I, I just don't want to lose this. And it might not be, you know, for someone who has, maybe a fifth grader, maybe not such a big deal, but I think if someone has a seventh going into eighth grade, you know, they don't want their, their child to not have that experience in eighth grade of being able to use these devices, so, you know, in a, in a, in a classroom setting, under teacher direction, because that's what this is addressing. You know, "Technology use is present not only in teacher-driven instruction, but in student-led activities." So that's just my two cents.
What do they mean by technology, though? Could it be?
It says, "To develop responsible practice with personal technology." So it doesn't say personal technology, that it's necessarily student-owned technology, but I mean, I'm just reading what it says in the report. They were obviously observing students using personal technology, you know, in the middle school. And my point being that, you know, that we're not, we're not at the point yet that we can have one-on-one in the, in the middle school. So I, I feel like, I'm just not in favor of a total ban at this time, because I think that there's still probably a legitimate use in some classrooms. And we haven't heard specifically how the teachers are using it, and maybe we still need to gather that information, but I just don't want to lose this, is what I'm saying. I don't want to say we're doing a total ban and we're going to lose some of the valuable instruction, because it's going to be three years before we can be one-on-one.
The principal of the middle school will be glad to be answering specific questions regarding the course.
Yeah.
I mean, I see the draft policy, I'm totally okay with that. My big thing is, you know, I have full faith and trust in my teachers in terms of making the appropriate decisions with technology, whatever that looks like, whether it's district provided, or students have their own appropriate devices. In terms of the equity issue, I mean, that's something we take every year, it's not just with devices, but, but anything. Simple things that come up, you know, I'm headed down to Washington, you see 100 eighth graders are Friday morning at 6:00, 6:00 AM. We have students that can't afford to go on the truck, and we make sure they can go on the truck. I mean, if we have students that don't have whatever type of device, even if we provided district devices and their device was down, it's my responsibility as principal to make sure my students have the tools they need to be successful in the class. And I also have full faith in my teachers for making those appropriate decisions. So that's kind of how, how I look at it. Technology is changing so fast, and what I mean by that is, one of the things we saw at Hanover, where I was really impressed in terms of their school, and I enjoyed all four road trips. But in terms of, you know, what I heard from students and teachers, you know, you can provide flexible Chromebooks, but after they're a couple years old, students consider, might consider them an anathema. but after they're a couple of years old, um, students consider, might consider them inadequate. So that's why, you know, they might want to use their own personal device because it might be a better fit in terms of the educational activity or a benefit as alluding to. So just a couple of really kind of quick thoughts. But again, I'm okay with the draft policy. But again, I have full trust in my teachers. And if a student doesn't have a resource, whether it's a device, pencils, notebooks, anything, we, we are best to make sure they're providing for that kid so that kid is successful in the classroom. That's why we do this job.
Have you had any, um, issues with equity? Because, you know, people saying, my, my son, my son, you know, I felt ill at ease because he didn't have something.
No, I, we have, we have the most regard.
Just Denise, you raise a, an excellent point. When I read the same document, I didn't necessarily assume they were referring to in-classroom use of personal devices. I read it in, it could have been a number of things. It could have been, um, training on, you know, social media awareness, um, that, that sort of thing. So what I would propose, because I think it's a really important point to consider, is that we just ask them for clarification as to, you know, what did you see that, that sort of resulted in your, your, your statement in the report? And then the other thing, Jay, is if, could you describe to us, um, and I realize it's probably fairly difficult, but the, the, your, your current device capacity, your current school-managed device capacity? What is it now? What might it be for next year? And how, how could you manage it? Let's say there were no personal devices available. How would that impact curriculum and what, what would you think you would do?
I think it would have a significant impact on particularly my seventh and eighth grade teachers in terms of what they're doing in their classroom, from research to students using personal devices. For, to give quick examples, like our STEM group in seventh and eighth grade, we're very fortunate in terms of the resources we have in that STEM room, but they're all desktops. So when Mr. Severio does these STEM projects where he's getting the kids to create, um, these projects that you can actually control with, um, personal electronic devices, it'd be more than that, we could get into a lot of specifics in terms of how that's done. But I don't want to speak to John, but I think he'd be devastated and be really concerned if we did not allow their kids personal devices at that time for the kind of projects that he's doing, particularly with engineering process that they do with their current personal devices in seventh and eighth grade. I think in fifth grade, it'd be no big, big deal at all, um, not allowing personal devices. Our teachers aren't using it in, in the classroom. They just fight over the typical resources in terms of the one iPad card or the one card per team of group of four teachers. So really where it comes down, what do we currently have? I think we have a iPad card that the teachers use for music assessments. Kids often use, I think you've talked with the music teachers, can use their personal devices to create recordings that are assessed by the teachers. They also use their personal devices a lot in our program for music tuning. When I come up to concerts, um, kids are using their personal devices to tune their instruments. And Fokker, an expert on that, and Mr. Tony, one of the music people, telling that, which I observe. But back to the original question, I think, is what do we currently have? Every group of four teachers has a card. And those are the core teachers. And we have, I think, two or three iPad cards. And then we have, I think, an old Chromebook card as well. But there is definitely, I think, a significant need in terms of teachers wanting more, um, devices for use in the classroom. So is that how?
Yeah, generally, thank you.
I know that I've seen at the high school, um, that obviously there isn't enough, there aren't enough computers for every classroom every day. So teachers kind of, um, change what they're doing on specific days. But at the high school at least, I mean, obviously I haven't been at the middle school for a while. It's, it doesn't seem to be a problem when they can't get ahold of it. They just kind of shift what they're doing to the next day or something.
I would just add too, uh, in terms of the planning process, our teachers do a great, great job of planning. So when they do ask the kids if they have devices that is appropriate for the classroom, it's planned ahead. It, it's not something random where the kids all of a sudden show up and it's like, alright, you need your electronic devices if you have them, or you can use them where everybody's free and wanted to find them, or that type of thing. It's, it's well planned ahead. So a recent note on Exter, or one of my science teachers, Amy Lawrence, where she put up a sign, if you have a personal electronic device, you're allowed to use it. We currently don't allow students to use personal electronic devices during the day. I think somehow, as John said, that the big difference, what we've done at RMS is we have allowed students to use personal devices at lunch. But again, I'm okay with making a change with that. If you decide that is a bore with the current cap policy, that's okay.
What, what, how then, Brian?
So, um, you know, I, I think this conversation, the thing that's really interesting to me, because we keep focusing on the device. And I think the really cool development, because like, you know, it used to be way back when, you had to have a floppy disk. And then we went to like the thumb drives and all that. But I think the, uh, the really cool thing that's happened is the cloud-based applications really mean that, and I've seen it with my daughter, who's an eighth grader, that the work she does at school, like she comes home and then logs onto a computer and the work is there. So it kind of, so I mean, it's an interesting place that we're gonna go. I think clearly we want managed devices, that, that's the standard. But I, I do see that we are, there's a, there's two transitions that I, I can see that are gonna occur. The first one, and I've heard from a lot of parents who actually do contact their kids, particularly the madness of scheduling. And, and I think it's gonna take an educational component on our part, getting people used to the idea that the, I forgot my saxophone at seven fifty call goes through. And then also like as a parent that I know that I can at one o'clock text my kid and say, I'm gonna pick you up at three-ten. And the kid's used it at, at three-ten, picking up, turning on his phone and seeing the text being there and responding. So I think there's gonna be a, a period of transition to that. But I think that hopefully, very quickly, will reduce the number of, of that. I think the second one is like the use in the classroom. And so I, I have an eighth grader, my daughter has a cell phone, but she doesn't take it to school. Ironically enough, she's afraid that she's gonna break it. So she doesn't take it, which is, is interesting. So I said, okay, what do you need technology for if you don't have a cell phone? And the, believe it or not, the first thing was the lowest hanging fruit, which is a calculator. So I said, well, you don't have a calculator, what do you, how do you use a calculator? Why use somebody else's cell phone? So I, I, so I said, okay. And then I said, well, do you use it for word processing or the, and it was really not the case. So I think, you know, we, we definitely want to go to the managed technology, but I think there is kind of a hole, there's no question, I think, that we have a hole there. And I think what really drives people crazy is the, the vagueness of the exception. And I know it's down into the policy of you guys, but that's the big thing, is like clarifying. And I think that's really talking, what exactly are you using technology for in your classroom? How, how are we not meeting that need currently? And if we are gonna form a bridge policy, that we really clarify what is acceptable use of outside technology in your classroom? So that there's a clear standard. Because again, the big thing is the inconsistency of it. And it still drives me crazy, by the way, you're gonna turn it on and you will get like fifty, like, you know, Mookie just hit a homerun, woo-hoo. That, that all come on their phone and that is distracting. So if we are gonna try to fill that deficit, that we do have a very, very clear idea what exactly that's being used for and under what conditions. And the, the hope of that is to try to remove the inconsistency where one teacher says, okay, I, you can use the cell phone, and the other one says, no. The kids can't understand why. I think clearly during the rest of the day, no, you shouldn't have a cell phone. There's really no need to have a cell phone. So again, I think the real challenge, it's not the actual policy. It's the, the, the R policy. How do you implement that? How do you add a little bit more structure to that? So that we have, so there's not like an unfettered use, that we really are examining it and that we move towards, again, the point of getting to one-on-one technology.
You raise an interesting point, Al. One of the things that was noteworthy in many of the policies we've looked at is a lot of districts do not have a cell phone policy as a standalone thing. They have what's called an acceptable use policy or something along that line. And the use of technology, devices, personal devices is wrapped up in that, in the policy. In fact, we have an acceptable use policy that all kids, um, when they register for school are agreeing, their parents are agreeing that they're following the acceptable use policies of the district. It applies to all technological devices used, whether it's yours or not in the district and on, on our, our service. So clear this ethical question there. And by the way, all of our, our staff also agreed to follow that acceptable use policy. And it's, it's fleshed out fairly well, but as, as Dr. Morse said, um, one of the things that, technology is so rapidly changing. I mean, five years ago, there was, people talked about people wearing wristwatches that were, um, personal devices. It really wasn't a thing yet. And now it's, it's a, it's a fairly common thing. And so the, the way technology is evolving, if we get too specific on the notion of a cell phone, because frankly, the phone part is really not the problem. The part, it's the smart aspect, the texting, it's the social media access, it's, that's the, that's the issue we're trying to deal with. So as far as how policy deals with it, it deals with it by, as we've done, by establishing what the parameters are of ethical behavior and when it's acceptable to use the, the device and when it's, when it's not. So the fact that we're now in the realm of talking about cell phones specifically, we would actually be one of a fairly few numbers, school districts that actually have a school board policy that specifically focuses on cell phones as an individual item, separate from all technological devices. Most of them, in fact, you see in the draft, you said Exter has an AUP, an acceptable use policy. You know, the, the, um, Lebanon had the same thing, Hanover had the same thing. Really what we're talking about is school-level management and how we manage the policy. And so when we get to the building level, clearly, and as a lot of people have said, we are in this sort of a transitional period here. I think the end goal is absolute minimal use of personal devices. And like you said, we'd like to have more managed devices that we have complete control over. Absolutely, I think that should, that should be the end goal. In, in the meantime, how do we manage that? We manage it, like we've managed a lot of things. We, we make it clear what ethical responsible use of technology is. We preach that, we teach that, we, we give teachers kind of support in kind of sorting that out. And when somebody crosses the line, obviously we have to address it. But, uh, so kind of going back to like getting too precise about what constitutes a good educational use, that implies an ability to predict future technological developments and what they might be. I, I, when I was, I can remember in nineteen ninety-five, when I was teaching a unit on the Boston Marathon and Mark Milliken, who was a teacher at MoHera, was the first teacher in the district to have the internet. He had dial-up modem in his classroom. And I thought it was the greatest thing in the world. I was over there spending like forty-five minutes just to find one runner's name and a little bit of bio on. Clearly we're in a very different place. But, you know, to, to get too specific about defining educational use, it's like, the issue is ethical use and making sure people understand it. And I, we, we talk about that stuff all the time.
I, it's the reminder, the minute that you, the, the minute that you use whatever, your own iPad or your own device, it is an unmanaged device and it carries a risk. So that, I just want to reinforce that. You know, if, if you really, 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 really need to use it, that's the barrier that you're going over. So it's like, it's, I think that needs to be in the forefront of everybody's mind. I mean, we need the technology, but again, when you pull out, whether it be your iPad, your iPhone, your iWatch, whatever it is, and it's unmanaged, you've accepted a risk. And so I think that should be at the forefront of our mind when we think about how you use it. Because if you're gonna use the unmanaged device, you have to have a really good reason to do it is, is why. So I, I think that's telling you like, no, you can only use it to do a calculator or do word processing or take a picture. I'm not trying to say that. I'm just trying to say the actual like, you're gonna use an unmanaged device, it's risky. Really, really think hard if you need to use it. That's what I'm saying.
Right. I actually have a question for, for Josh. If I, if, I'll wait to get up here, but I'm kind of curious as to what it would look like if we transition gradually to a one-on-one, you know, basis for, for managed devices as we're talking about. What, what does that look like? What does the path look like? And what kind of timeframe are you looking at if, if we do that?
So Dr. Morse and I have had numerous conversations about this. And I don't think we've arrived at any definitive conclusion. But you have models reintroduced at a grade level at a time, you know, so you get it built up. So, you know, start with fifth, every year as things move on, you had a break. We were talking yesterday about the notion of trying to hit, um, the four grades in the middle school at once. And then as the eighth graders transition out, the eighth graders' devices would only be year olds. So you don't have a fifth grade, a model like that. Do we do the middle school first, then the high school? Do you do both schools at the same time? Obviously, the costs associated with that vary drastically. So I think there's a lot of options. I don't have a, a, a clear, um, best practices. Every school does it differently. I know one school, um, that I spoke to on Friday, they have an end-of-year surplus. They're going as many devices, as many grades as they can at the end of the year. And they're just buying devices, no plan in terms of PD or, or anything like that. So I think every school takes it differently.
Sure. So I just want to add into that, Brian. So the Todd alluded to the group of educators who've been working diligently. I think that the, another part of the cell phone conversation, you know, there's, there's always a silver lining. Well, I guess in this case, there would be two. One is the elimination of cell phones at our middle school. The second one would be that the conversation for one-to-one devices has become incredibly, um, meaningful to our staff. So I may have shared that six years ago, when I came in, there was zero interest in our schools for going to a one-to-one solution for our kids. But as Todd alluded to, the technology has evolved to the point where our teachers are demanding more and more access. Patty alluded to teachers actually adjusting their lesson plans. That's a solution to the lack of availability and the flexibility of our teachers. It's not a solution to addressing the issue of one-to-one. So as we're working with this team of teachers, one of the things that, you know, is most important to them is the professional development piece. And, you know, as we talked to this K through twelve representative group, there's probably thirty people on this committee because this issue has really become a major initiative that we didn't see coming. And it was actually driven not just by this conversation, but by our staff, who you might recall in last year's, well, this year's NEAS report, the issue of technology for the first time became an issue for our high school staff. So a lot of, it's a lengthy answer, but I, if we, since we're already going into next fiscal year and we didn't consider a one-to-one solution, clearly next year is not an implementation year. But as we enter the fall, we're, this team of teachers is putting together a plan for your consideration. So we'll come out of August with a very concrete plan for the board to consider regarding the implementation of a one-to-one solution. It could be, um, it could be, it, it all comes down to, um, really how much the board wants to go, go, the handle in relation to the, uh, the financial burden. But I, I, I think it can be done in three school years, not counting this one coming up. Or it could be done in four years. Josh alluded to a one-grade-at-a-time solution, and that's really not a solution either because it would take us eight years to get, um, you know, a device in our students' hands. So I think a three-to-four-year solution will get us there relatively quickly. So that's about how long it'll take. And then it's the issue of what do you prioritize? You know, do we, you know, based on the conversation that we had around cell phones, it seems to me the priority would be the middle school. If we do the middle school first, then every device we currently own, we can shift to the high school, which is about three hundred devices. Get those in the high school, and then we are one year away from, um, having a Get those in the high school, and then we are one year away from having a comprehensive solution at the high school. So I think it's a three-school-year, maybe four, plan that you'll see in the fall. That's my best guess, based on the conversations we've had.
Do we have the infrastructure to do that? To, I mean, is that, are we going to have additional costs to build that out? I mean, is...
I would say, over time, definitely. We're certainly going to have to do some things. I mean, we already have some infrastructure kind of on my replacement plan. We have some equipment that's going to handle life 2020, 2021. So we want to try to get that swapped out ahead of time. So certainly, now that this is the driving factor, taking all that into consideration. We just did the wireless last year. I don't see that having any problems at all. A few more meetings ago, we added some bandwidth. I think we'll, probably year over year, we'll need to be growing there as the need arises.
But we're doing that now.
Yeah, that's, that's happening. We're, we're within the guidelines set by the FCC and other groups out there. The ones that I would say are my concerns, you know, dropping, you know, over 1,000 devices on the network are going to be, you know, probably our firewall, content filtering capabilities, some of those things. There's some costs there, but, you know, we replace them. The ones that right now were purchased five or six years ago. So by the time we get this going, they're going to be due for replacement anyway. So I think everything that we'd be looking at would be part of a natural replacement plan anyway. So there will be some, and the software that you mentioned, you know, that's something that we don't have district-wise right now. So there could be costs there. So there's going to be, there's going to be other costs other than devices. And I think as we go through this process, the teachers will hopefully be able to identify those.
One of the concerns I've heard, and I would just ask you to sort of describe the practical implications of it, is that this is a K through eight policy. So we've been talking a lot about the middle school. Could you talk a little bit more about the elementary schools and how they might be impacted?
Yeah. You know, first of all, I want to say that the policy as I wrote it is what I believe. I do believe that we should not have personal devices in our elementary or middle school-aged children's hands during the school day, because I absolutely believe that they're a distraction and that we don't need that distraction in the educational day. And I think we've heard evidence from teachers, you know. Mrs. Bromley's been very clear that it's not an issue in her school system. We've heard that it's not a Hanover issue. So, you know, there's, you know, there is that innate pressure to keep up with the Joneses. And so what happens in parents' cases, Johnny has it, oh, Johnny has it, everybody has it, Mom, Dad, I need it. And, you know, I think that the conversation going toward a one-to-one device is absolutely the right conversation. Here's why. These, as Al was talking about the risk, he really didn't say what the risk was. A school device runs through our filtering system. A smartphone device, all they have to do is turn off the web component, and they have, they have their cellular component. We, we don't monitor. When their device is using our network, it's running through our servers, our filters. When their device is turned off to our network, there is no filter, meaning they can go anywhere they want, and we have no control over that. So that's the risk, I think, that Al was alluding to. So in the elementary level, this would be easy breezy to implement. The problem that we face is the historical culture of our district, where access has been relatively unfettered. You know, we can, I mean, that's, that's just a fact. I think Tom's reflection on the survey, you know, when you're talking about that many contacts, what would you say, 800,000, Tom? Some ridiculous number like that. I mean, how much of that is really meaningful contact? So, you know, as I was putting together the procedures, I was thinking about the teachers who use the devices appropriately. And, and I do think that the end game is even that component wouldn't be necessary. Often, I use the phrase, if I was king of the mountain instead of superintendent, there would be no exception. And then, you know, you guys, as a school board, can debate over whether that exception is necessary, or, as Al suggested, it needs to be tightened up considerably. I'm A-OK with, with that. But I think that the sooner we can get district devices in our middle school students' hands, this debate goes away immediately, other than the issue of, I want to talk to my kid when I want to talk to him, you know, regardless of what you're doing in the school day. You know, based on that survey, I'd say there's a lot of that going on, and how much of it's really important and how much is just convenient. You know, I'm sure a lot of those messages are simply, love you, hon. You know, it's just, that's the way parents are. You know, they're just sending a message of love and support, and it may not have anything to do with, I need to pick you up at 3:10. You know, just thinking of you. I mean, that's, that's just natural. But is it necessary, you know, in the course of a school day? And that's the distraction piece. So, you know, I, I think there's a compelling case that has been made, that this isn't necessary in our middle school, it isn't necessary in our elementary schools. I think it's a non-issue in our elementary schools, and it's only an issue in our middle schools because of the history, our cultural history.
One way I was thinking about it is there's three doors that have to close. You know, there's three kind of areas of use where we, you know, we need to make a shift. And the procedures now, the things proposed, closes two of those doors. One of the doors is, is the unmonitored use in like recess and, I think, you know, I don't know if they have recess, but certainly at lunch.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. That, that, that almost every other school district is closed. But this would close that door right away. The second door that it closed, which I think is going to be a little trickier in terms of, is closing the door of routine parent-student communication. Because, you know, if you look at the numbers of those communications, it's per day, you're talking 300, 300 back and forth, 400 back and forth. Can't all be, I mean, you can't forget your saxophone every day, you know.
Be surprised.
The other door that is going to be a little, in my view, I'll put it out, is going to be a little trickier to close, is the, the door for teachers who feel there's an appropriate use of the cellphone in their classroom. And I've talked to some eighth-grade teachers, and they think that they, it's useful. They, they think it hasn't disadvantaged any bunch of people who don't have cellphones. They, you know, that it hasn't created that inequity. And we have, like, for example, we have letters from the tech integrator, who doesn't want to close the door absolutely. We have a letter from the librarian, who doesn't want to close the door absolutely. We have 60% of the teachers in the first survey who saw some educational use. I think that door might have to close a little more slowly. But that door's going to close. And you said, at Hanover, you saw that door closing. So I just almost see these doors closing. And maybe the question before us is how, is it going to go absolutely the fall, or are we going to have a transition, as Denise was saying? So, okay?
One, I just, one point, I totally agree. One point, and I'm less concerned about the, the student that forgets the saxophone. My biggest concern, honestly, is the parent who maybe has a kind of job where they do not have access to their phone all the time. So currently, they shoot their child a text that says, I can't pick you up today, you have to take the bus home. And now that student doesn't get that message until the bus has left, and now you've got a student stuck at school. That's more my concern than, if the kid didn't, forgot the saxophone, oh, well, they'll learn to bring their saxophone to school. So I am, I am somewhat concerned. To me, there are some more important messages that are currently being sent on those texts. And again, not all parents have free access to their phone all the time. I mean, there's plenty of jobs where you don't. So, I mean, I'm willing, I'm totally willing to try this, the proposal as, as it's presented. But, you know, I, I do anticipate that we're probably ultimately going to need to tweak that somewhat, because I think there are going to be those kinds of situations that arise.
I can just respond. Denise, when we were all kids, if that happened, how would the procedure go forward? What would happen if your mother had to get ahold of you and let you know to take?
Well, according to the way the procedure is written, they're not going to get the message. They're just going, the way it's written is that they are going to be asked to call their parent, is the way that our document is currently written. They're not getting the message that you have to take the bus home. They're getting a message that says, call your parent. So they try to call the parent, the parent can't answer the phone, they're never going to get that message. That's my concern.
But Jay, what's the procedure now, as far, like, if somebody, if a parent calls?
If a parent called the front office, we would get the message to the kid. Really, what we like to do is, we like to get their messages during lunchtime, so there's no disruption to the end of the school day. So it's kind of like a real-time type of thing.
If it was an emergency, though, they could call the classroom, right?
What's that?
If it was an emergency, they could call the classroom.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, here, sorry, our students can use classroom phones to a teacher permission as well.
But, but the message the student would get would be, hey, you have to take the bus home, not just, you need to call your mom.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever the parents want us to do. Make sure, Al, make sure you take the dog out when you get home. We get a lot of unique messages.
I've done, I've used this serve, it works. I've called, so.
Whatever message it, message is, we get that to the.
So that might be a point of clarification in the, in the procedure part. Is this proposed to be a complete rewrite of the existing policy?
It's the existing policy?
Right.
Yeah, it eliminates the current policy in favor of this one. You'd actually have two policies. You'd have a high school policy and you'd have a K through eight policy.
So the existing policy would live on as a high school policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we just, we just redid that whole policy last year.
Yeah, yeah. I guess one of my concerns is that there are a number of things in this that I think are either missing or are weaker than the current policy. Obviously, the removal of the, the between-class periods during lunch and riding school buses is significant. But the rest, the bottom half of the existing procedure about, essentially is kind of a miniature acceptable use policy, I think, is, is missing in the...
From the current policy?
No, not from the proposed policy.
No, it's in the current policy, you're saying you'd like to see it in the proposed policy?
If this is replacing the current policy, then yes. I think it's important to rethink items three through, I don't know, at least five in the, in the existing policy. And also, I think it's interesting that we, the consequences are different between the two, and we're kind of watering those down, actually.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of sending kids home for violating, this is an issue of device, you take the device. I don't think you send kids home for this. I think that's a ridiculous overreaction, where the issue is easily resolved by taking the device. I don't think you suspend kids for, you just take the device.
I think the language in there is actually less strict than what we, our current practices at the middle school, because if a kid makes a poor choice with a device for the first time, my assistant principal and I say, depending on the offense, or often, if it's only even on the second offense, we say, you know, you don't have a lot to bring your personal device to school until further notice. Could be a month, could be...
That's in your draft.
What's that?
That is in the draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I appreciate the, the discussion on the, how the dash R relates to the policy. And I understand that it's kind of, I don't know if it's traditional or if it's actually in, structured somewhere, that the, the board approves the procedure, the dash R part here in Oyster River. I am concerned that if, if the board does not have direct oversight over the procedure, that we shouldn't be creating exceptions in the procedure. I mean, if the policy is this, to create exceptions underneath it in a way that the, the board doesn't have direct oversight of is questionable, I guess, in my mind.
What's, what the other, not to interrupt, but I mean, what the other schools that we visited did, basically left that up to the principal?
Which is what this does.
Right.
So the procedures have always been reviewed by the board. They've never been approved by the board, because procedures by definition are the administrative interpretation of policy. So when you, what you're saying, Michael, is that you think that the current procedures as presented are not in concert with the policy, then that is the conversation. That's the conversation we're having.
I guess that's kind of, to some extent, that's a philosophical question. Should the administration be able to create exceptions to policy?
In a practical sense, yes, because board policy doesn't, board policy is a broad guidance to management. This is how we want you to run the system. So from the board seat, you have no idea the complications that Suzanne, or Jay, or David, or Carrie have in running a building. So if a teacher comes to a administrator, you want to provide the latitude in policy that allows the administrator to interpret that policy. If you go through most of our policies, most of them, they almost always say, with exception provided, given superintendent permission. They almost always say that. And so this particular one in this draft, I haven't. But this was a rough draft. I wasn't trying to get to a finished document. So that's, you know, in practice, the board really isn't managing, they're setting the management goal. This is what we want to achieve. You figure out how to do it.
Yeah, I do, I do think it's significant, though, where, where that threshold for exception lies. And it's one thing to say, the superintendent has the authority to make exceptions to this on essentially case-by-case basis, and it's another entirely to say that this is up to teacher discretion.
Absolutely. I mean, that is exactly the conversation we're having tonight. That's why I put that there, so we would have this conversation tonight. You know, otherwise, I'm flying blind. So I'm trying to figure out where seven people are in terms of the policy, and then in terms of the procedures. So if this, no, I go back to what Al said and what you're saying right now, Michael. You know, Al is saying, that exception is too broad, revisit it. If you're saying the same thing, just in a different way, then all I need to know is that's the will of the board, and I go back and attack it. That's exactly why it's on the table.
Can I say one thing? So to answer Tom's question about the three doors, I think, I totally agree with you. It's like, I think the lunchroom day door definitely should close. That, that's, that's an easier one. And again, I do think, like, closing the door number two, which is the communication, that we should do it. I, I think there's, you can reach, parents can, I've always been able to reach my child whenever there's been a problem. It's going to be, it's, I think it's going to be more of a transition for parents than for kids, but, but it's going to be work in progress. Door number three, I agree with you, we're not going to be able to close. I don't think we can close. I think, yet, it's, I think that, I think that, you know, looking at what eighth-grade teachers are doing, there's some pretty exceptional eighth-grade teachers. I think that there is use there. To me, when I'm talking about tightening, we've, and I almost completely forgot until I read the emails, that we do have a technology integrator at the middle school. And so there really is a place there. All I'm really saying with that is that we, that we're really cautious about when we use it. And I think that's, you know, and I, I think it probably already occurs, but that, that people keep in mind that, that when you are using it, that you're using an unfettered device. And it's like, and I think that's, we, that's something the technology integrator can help, particularly as they're working with teachers and really, and I think that's going to be a work in progress over the year or years to try to really monitor that use. And I think this whole thing has really probably raised awareness of that anyway now. But I, I think that, you know, if we completely ban them, I think that there are going to be some things, as Denise said, that are lost. And I, I think, you know, I, I think that we're just going to have to work in a, kind of a workaround, until we really do have the one-on-one technology.
Just one point. I think, I think we have to be clear that in saying, if we do leave door number three open for educational use, we can't be saying that we're closing door number two. It's just as a practical matter, you know, the example earlier of how you power on a device, and it's all right there, you know. So I'm not sure we should be even telling ourselves that we're closing that door. I, I agree with the complexity of the situation. You know, a one-to-one is the ultimate solution, and that's not going to happen overnight. So, but I just, I just think we need to point that out, that we can't necessarily say communication is restricted when there are these exceptions for educational use. And just by, just by powering on a device, that communication is there. And, and we have to acknowledge the distracting influence it has on a student. So.
I just, like Al said, I just take the risk of using a non-managed device, you know, because the internet keeps crawling and growing and growing. What they're going to have access to is just, is going to be stuff that we're not even going to be aware of. So, so I kind of take issue with that. And I, I just, you got to do the best, the best you can in order to manage that. And I, I just, you gotta do the best, the best you can in order to manage that. I think getting a stricter policy would do that. The second thing is, I think we have to as a board, even though it won't be part of this policy, is we have to make a commitment, I think, to, maybe as part of our long-range planning, is to become a one-to-one, you know, school system eventually. What that timeframe looks like, obviously it'd be something you have to look at, you know, with future budgets and with Josh and administrators, but I think we really have to make that commitment as a board because I think that's what we're gonna solve this, this issue. And I think it's, it's, I think it's the wave of the future too. You know, I mean, obviously, those devices are gonna change and what's, those abilities are gonna change. We're also having younger teachers come in and that's how they, they're, they use managed devices, you know? That's how they will work. And they can bring in a lot more than, you know, teachers that have been doing this for, for 20 or 30 years. So I'm thinking away from them, but it's just a different style of learning that comes in. And, you know, what we saw in our road trips is actually really, really interesting stuff they were doing with managed devices that really, I was kind of blown back by some of those, they were doing what, Civil War thing, I remember.
Yeah, they're doing research, researching.
Local Civil War.
Somebody from Norwich, Norwich, Vermont, you know, in their school district fought in Civil War, yeah. It was nice.
And it was, it was amazing what they were doing with devices and to see that was, and, and the other end of it was, they look at us as kind of something to, to gauge themselves against what Oyster River doing that we can be doing. So it was really a, it was, it was fascinating.
So I guess I need to be clear about when a decision, I mean, there still is an issue, I think, from the board, whether we're going to, whether the draft policy is something we want to go forward with and, and, you know, have a first read, or whether we want to have, you know, maybe layover to the next meeting and then decide whether, you know, contemplate what we've talked about, decide whether we want to have that, approve that, maybe that policy were defined or, or.
Can I ask a question, Tom?
Sure, sure.
So I'm not hearing in this conversation with the board, any problem with the draft policy. The draft policy says that there will be no use of the phones from first bell to end bell. Am I wrong on that?
Correct.
Well, just the only thing I heard from Michael was the, you, what I'm hearing from you, Michael, is the exceptions are not in.
Well, that's the procedure. So I just wanna, I just want to separate the two questions for a second. Is, is, so it gets to the heart of what Tom was saying. Is the policy the right policy? Does it say what you want it to say?
Yeah.
Then I want to go back to the procedure because I still need guidance, you know? I'm still hearing seven people have a conversation. I'm not hearing coherence yet. I hear, you know, we need to have an exception. I'm also hearing that if we're going to have an exception, and this is the, this is where I need the clarity, I'm gonna back and write these policies. You know, Michael's been very specific, pick up number three through five in the current policy, include it in the draft. That's great, that's easy to do. But the less easy to do is if there's going to be an exception. So what I'm hearing from the board, and this is what I'm testing, okay, is tighten up the exception. Not eliminate it. I'm hearing tighten up the exception. And am I reading the board right? That's what I want to know. Because I need to know what to do next. And it really seems like I have to focus in on the procedures, not the policy.
I guess my, my opinion is that the exception for educational purposes defined by the teacher should be eliminated.
Just completely eliminated?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, to take that step.
So you're gonna close all three doors at once?
I, I know it's a period of adjustment on all sides, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, so.
I guess, I, I appreciate the, the discussion tonight about the, the perceived academic benefits of personal devices in the classroom setting. This discussion's been going on for six months and I wish that that had been, come up a lot earlier in the process. But I also feel like there, we're kind of, yeah, we've got, we've got reasons for and reasons on the other side and they're kind of talking past each other. We don't address in any of this discussion the concerns about the downsides of having personal devices in the, in the classroom. And so I guess that's on us to, to weigh those independently of each other. And I come down to the side of, I, I think we should take the plunge and, and remove that exception.
Okay.
I cannot, I can't be in favor of that. As, and again, you know, I'm going to go back to the NAMs, you know, this school just received this NAM spotlight reward, and part of it was the work that is being done with technology in the middle school. And I, I, I'm not willing to just throw that away. I'm sorry. And I, I, I'm sorry that we can't, you know, do the one-on-one right away. It's not a reality. And I think, you know, it's just like, I guess I'm looking at it, when we did the start time, we started off and people were like, "You gotta do it right away, you have to do it right now." And the first thing that we heard was, "You've got to flip-flop the, you know, the elementary and the high." And we said, "Slow down, slow down." We slowed it down, we came up with a better solution, I think, but it took time. And there were people that wanted us to do it right away, but we said, "We can't do it right away. We need to take time, we need to come up with a good solution." And ultimately, we did implement that solution. I mean, we can look at that with all sorts of things, kindergarten. I mean, we wanted full-day kindergarten in our district for a long time, we couldn't do it. So, you know, sometimes unfortunately, we, we just can't do what we want to do immediately. We have to look at the long-term. And I hear what you're saying, Michael, but I think this is something that has, we have to look. I'm not willing to wait three years for the kids to be able to do what they, the cool stuff that is happening. I'm not willing to just let three years' worth of kids go through the middle school and not have access to that.
I agree. It's like, I, I think that I'm fine with the policy. I think the procedure, I think the exception should be there. Again, I put to you, Jim, just to, to just, you know, again, and you say tighten, but just that, that people are aware to use caution or use it wisely.
So to follow up on Michael's point, I, I want to remain, I don't want to lose the value in delivery of curriculum as supported by devices. And I feel, I feel like we've kind of backed ourselves into a corner over the course of time. We are where we are. I think it'd be worth seeing another draft with more detail on, along the lines of how it, how those exceptions would be really narrowed down and managed. I'm, but I will say, I'm having a lot of trouble imagining how you allow personal devices, and again, going back to Al's point, it's that, it's the nature of a personal device and its access to the outside world that really troubles me. And so I would want to understand how, you know, how we expect a student to carry on them, for example, a device, and expect our, our teachers to, you know, sort of enforce the policy when, you know, they see a device, they don't, and they don't necessarily know if it's a lab. So I, I would want to just get greater detail on how that could work. And then I think it would give us some more clarity on the path forward.
Greg? I would agree with what Michael said. Of course, he did it much fewer words than me, but.
I'm too blunt, sorry.
But I would, I would, I'm just having a hard time seeing you get an unfettered device, non-tethered, you know, unmanaged device in the classroom, you know, because I think if you give them an inch, they take a mile. I'm not saying anything negative by that saying that, please don't take it that way. But I think if we're, if we're opening that, if we're opening up this much, we're, we're opening up the whole door. We're not just opening up a crack, we're opening it open the whole way. And that's kind of a risk that I'm not willing to take at this point, especially knowing what I know now, all the research that we've seen has been presented to us. Take the path of one-to-one down the road, I know it's not gonna happen now, I know what they're gonna happen about me in the next school year, but I think we're gonna have, like, trust them, we're gonna come with a, with a pretty good plan on how to do that in the next year. And, you know, hey, we were all taught without electronic devices and kids will, will love to do just fine. We all turned out.
I think my position is closer to Denise's. I'm concerned that, I have incredible respect for the teachers at the middle school. And if you go back to the earlier survey, what you find is they, they feel they could manage this, you know, this monitoring and judicious use of the cell phone in, in their classroom. And I've talked to some, you know, eighth grade teachers and, and they say that they could, they, you know, they can manage that. Could they manage everything? Can, you know, could they say that this kid never does, you know, never checks something else? Of course not. I think it's a mistake to impose a policy, any policy, on a group that does not, that resists that. You know, if you're gonna impose a policy on the teachers, you have, almost all of whom would oppose this based on the survey. But that's something to keep in mind. You have the librarian who opposes, who would oppose the, you know, you know, removing this exception. You have the tech integrator who would oppose it. You have probably 80% of the teachers who would oppose it. So if we're gonna go down that road, just, I think we need to bear that in mind because I think, I think probably the administration would oppose that absolute ban. So you're gonna have kind of a top-down action to, you know, that you're putting on teachers who I think think that they, you know, you know, who are the ones who are working with the kids who believe they can manage it. Now maybe that's, maybe we think they're, they're mistaken, that they can't manage it. But I think, I think that dynamic is something we have to keep in mind because it concerns me because, you know, I've, I've talked to them and I think they see possibilities, ways of using it. I think they'd be fine moving towards managed devices. I think that's a good thing for us to do. But I'm, I'm uncomfortable just saying, okay, starting on September, all these things you've been doing are just off the table.
They'll disappear.
I don't think we have to do that, though.
We do, they don't have the devices in the school.
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You know, I, we didn't talk about any, some of the other, other things related to district finances are not on the agenda tonight, but we do know that, for example, we have a little bit of an insurance holiday next year. And I don't know, what does an iPad cost? $500?
$300.
$300? Okay, that can't be my math that fast in my head, but you could probably buy an iPad for every seventh grader and every eighth grader and probably every sixth grader for the quarter million dollars or so that we're gonna be under the budget on insurance next year. You could do it for just one or two years and probably hit most of the, you know, most or maybe even all of, of the, of the critical users in the, or the high users in the, in the middle school. I don't think we have to throw the baby out with the bathwater by eliminating personal device use in the middle school.
Okay. Kenny, give us a.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Well, I just wanted to bring Josh up because it's not just buying the devices. Please, Josh, I have a question of, even if we had the money, let's say tomorrow, we had all the money to be able to buy every seventh and eighth grader an iPad, we could, could we actually implement that by the fall? I mean, if the, in terms of, it's also a huge undertaking to get all those devices, you know, ready to go and, and everything that's involved.
I mean, this last summer, I think we processed about 600 new devices. So I think the challenge for us is more the shipping and the supply and demand. If we get them mid-August, then yeah, it becomes a major issue. If they ship very quickly and we get them, you know, July, it's much more doable. It is really hard to say, and the iPads can, can be set up fairly quickly. Traditionally done, Windows laptops, those take a little bit more time. I, I think personally, my bigger concern is more around the PDU of the teachers and getting them comfortable and, and the other tools that they may need, you know, to implement digital workflows and things like that, you know, buying devices and getting them ready or. We've done it a lot. It's, it's not too, too bad. You know, if you're talking 1,500 devices, I started getting a little nervous, but we have a lot of students, I'm sure they'll be happy to have us involved.
So I just want to point out, Michael just opened up a different mindset in relation to this. And we know that the elementary staff want iPads. We know that the middle school staff wants laptops. However, we can't do either. But if we ended up buying iPads, if Michael's suggestion gains traction for the seventh, eighth grade, the following year, we can move those right into the elementary. So it's not like it's a wasted expense.
We just need to be careful to make sure we have enough devices for any sort of standardized testing because they do require a keyboard and so we'll be able to.
Or the new ones.
Physical keyboard.
If, if, I mean, these are separate issues from the, one of the reasons I say the iPad is because we're talking about replacing what students are doing with their personal devices. That's the, that's the barrier we've been, we've been hearing about.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not a laptop, right? And so.
Sure. That's fair.
Interesting. But just, you know, puts us in a whole different ballgame.
I agree.
Yeah, if we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think it could be an incremental approach in terms of, you could, you could replicate the CART model initially and then, and then go to the full managed one-to-one device model as we build the infrastructure for that with a minimum of, hopefully a minimum of, of professional development. Obviously, there is load on your team.
Can I ask, Jay, can you, can we, might I answer a question for me? So K through four, we're pretty confident this is a non-issue. And in your presentation, you were saying it's not going to be, it's not an issue with fifth grade because they're not there yet.
Ah, towards the personal devices, yeah, they're not using personal devices in the classroom, those teachers aren't using.
The reason I'm coming back to that question is it kind of dovetails into what Michael just said. So if we were able, and if the board was supportive, putting a personal device, a district personal device, iPad, in seventh, eighth grade, it pretty much resolves, almost resolves these is concerned and others concerned about making sure that our staff have access to technology that they can use. And for sure, the, you know, even if it's a bridge solution, the iPads are far more powerful than anybody's smartphone unless they're really at the top, top of the line. So, so I think if the board is willing, I can attack this from a couple of different places. You know, I haven't heard from Kenny yet, just, just in terms of your sense of no exception or, or exception.
I feel that, kind of like Michael, that when we have the exception, we're really opening a wider door. And I agree with Michael about fast-forwarding the initial thought of taking four years. That's a really long time.
Yeah.
And we know that the internet and the connectivity and where people, kids are gonna go on it is only gonna become more problematic, not less problematic.
Right.
And I'm just not comfortable keeping that door open for four more years. And in my mind, before Michael suggested it, I was trying to think of funding ways to fast-forward and also phase in and really hit where our problems are.
And I will tell you that the school that needs the least professional development is actually the middle school because they're a very tech-savvy group. So if you guys would let me take this conversation back, do some analysis, you know, it's pretty clear that the board is split right now, three, four, in terms of no exception or exception. So that's always problematic because the board really isn't, you know, working in concert if you're split on this issue. But maybe Michael has opened a, a door that I can come back and we can create a policy that doesn't need me.
Can I add one slight caution to that? Because, I mean, we may have forgotten or we should think that we had to deplete all our reserve funds and that next year, actually, we could take a downshifting from the state retirement fund. And I think we should really keep that in mind. Before we spend.
We will.
Go off and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, let's think about the long game here.
So I think, I think what Dr. Morris is proposing to do is just flesh out what Michael's, and then we'll see what it looks like.
Yeah, I get it, but I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind.
Oh, I completely, I would put my.
It was like, very quickly, a couple hundred thousand dollars flowed out of the tongue, not thinking about where we are budgetarily next year. So I, I use that as a real strong caution.
So as I say, half hour ago, I didn't know where you guys were. I think, you know, a half hour later, I'm getting a better sense of where you are. And so I think I can take, so why don't we, why don't we do, I'll do another approach, but I don't want it to be the first draft, if that's okay? Because the, the plan we had, have this conversation tonight, get to a first draft. I think we have to have another conversation. And in that meantime, I'll, I'll flush out some of the ideas I've heard and then we're, maybe the next conversation, we can get, I'm a, you know, a, a good solid majority. Right now, we're right on the edge of a majority behind a revision.
And it seems to me like, you know, to, to resolve some of my concerns, if you could sit down with these eighth grade teachers and say, "Okay, what, what, or, you know, What, or, you know, so I think seventh and eighth grade teachers are probably the, the crux, core, you know? Okay, if we did X, if we provided you with X, would you no longer have to rely, or would you no longer need to rely?
Absolutely, yeah.
So that, so that they can see that, that this is not just us stripping them of things they want to do, but saying, okay, we recognize that you're doing these things, and you're doing them this way, and we'd like to see you be able to do them without having to use the cellphone, and what would it take, and how fast could we get there? I think that's kind of what you're saying, Mike, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think, and, you know...
I would say, I think we can, I think we can remediate some of the impact of closing all the doors.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and just, just because I feel like my position was kind of wishy-washy.
No.
I know.
The whole point has been so designed, Dan.
Because you're, you're asking for clarity, right? So I, I think by default, I want the three doors closed, and, and I think, my sense is that we're in general agreement on that as an ultimate solution.
Oh, yeah, I think you're definitely the ultimate solution.
So I really like what I'm hearing now, because I, I really don't want to cut off our teachers from being able to do the things they're doing. And that was my, that was my concern about not wanting to close the door. So I think sort of having that bridge approach to, you know, yes, investing in some technology, Al makes an excellent point, though, you know, restoring, um, some of those rainy day funds, I think should be a, a high priority. So finding that middle lane, I think, is, is the best approach.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
I just, I don't think this throws the timing off as well, because our first meeting in May will precede the May policy committee meeting. So if we're in agreement in May, what the policy should look like, then that policy committee meeting, and then we bring it back, um, maybe for first read, the second meeting we have in May, which is all we would have done anyway, probably, so...
Okay, so we all set? We think we have a plan now?
I, I think we do.
Okay. Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Sorry, Tom, before we do that, may I take just a moment for a point of personal privilege?
Sure, sure.
I just, I wanted to apologize to Al. Um, I, I realize that, that your comment during the discussion on the last day of school had no ill intent whatsoever, and it, my response was purely me reading too much into it, and was an unnecessary reaction, so, I, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Okay.
Is that...
Well, I've been, I've been to a conference all day.
What I really want is to be optimistic, not giving it up to you.
It's a lot of money, I'm worried about the cost, it's a lot of money, and you won't be, and you won't have the money for the rent. I mean, you know, I need, I, I, that makes me nervous. We'll see what happens, we'll see what happens.
But I think it, you know, to start, thinking of, what, how can we do it? What would it take to do it, I think?
Well, we could do it, it's just going to take a little longer than September, but whatever, we can see what happens, we'll just...
Okay. Okay, um, next order of business is, uh, the approval of the superintendent's contract. Dr. Morse has asked for a one-year extension on his contract and a three percent raise for this year, so that's the proposal. Um, so I wonder if I can have a motion to approve that contract?
A motion to approve superintendent's request for one-year extension, three percent.
Moved by Brian, is her second?
I'll second.
Second by Denise? Discussion on this? Hearing that, I mean, uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Really value your service and...
Thank you.
Like to work with you. Uh, can I motion to approve the spring volunteer coaches? Brian?
Motion to approve the spring volunteer coaches, as listed.
Moved by Brian, second by, um, Al. Um, I assume there's no discussion on this. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Okay, that's, uh, school board committee updates? Denise?
So, policy council met on April 11th. Um, we reviewed all the B policies, uh, which pertain to, um, basically, uh, the way we conduct our board, and, and, um, the, um, meeting, the, you know, all the different minutes, and, uh, public participation at board meetings, so on and so forth. We reviewed all those B policies, um, and have no recommendations for changes. We felt like they were all fine as they are.
Okay. And we're required to review those, right?
Yes, we, oh, yeah, we are required to review those annually, that is correct.
Other committee updates? None? Um, public comment?
You guys, all right, I missed the start of the meeting. Go, Brian, uh, Master Way. Uh, can I just start on a lighter note? Uh, I was down the hall tonight at the, uh, the Master Way presentation of Peter Pan, and Mo Hareman did, um, its, uh, presentation last night. I can't speak for Mo Hareman, so I wasn't there, but I just want to say that, um, the, the teachers and staff who put on that play, uh, for both schools, that I can only speak to Matt Swig, um, Pam Felber, and Aaron Herronwork, and Felicia Sperry, uh, who put in all the time and effort to help us kids do that, it was amazing. Uh, it really is a, a true treasure for our community. Um, I want to thank you two for the conversation tonight. Uh, I'm just going off the notes of what you guys were saying. Um, I think Michael really opened the door here to, to find a solution that I think you want to find. Um, I think Dan really hit it on the head when he mentioned that, you know, you're not really closing doors one and two, if you read door three open. Uh, door two is going to remain wide open, and so, uh, I think it is in the best interest of the board to find a solution to close the three doors, and so I, I urge you to do whatever you can to, to follow, um, to follow the money, and see, see what we can come up with, uh, because it, it is the right decision. The one thing that was, was lacking from the conversation tonight was evidence, and I, and we've presented a lot of evidence here in recent months, and I guess my question for you, and the question we will continue to have, is what is the evidence? Not, not about expediency, um, what is the evidence to, to, to create this loophole policy? Um, a couple, a couple of questions as you move forward. I really like Tom's idea about asking seventh and eighth grade teachers what they really need. I heard tonight we had three hundred, uh, school-managed devices in the middle school. That seems like a lot, um, especially when we heard from Mr. Richard that fifth grade doesn't even use personal devices. In fact, Jay said a few times, you know, we don't use personal devices during the day. Uh, that was something he actually said. So if you have three hundred devices already there, what do you really need? Another question I think you should be asking, uh, you guys seem to get some great feedback at the other schools from the students. Uh, I believe if you ask our own students about what it's like to use these Chrome Books, they'll tell you it's not equitable. So if you're, if you're exploring a policy that's going to put Samsung Galaxies and iPhone eights in some kids' hands, and our Chrome Books in other kids' hands, Jay described them tonight at one point as the old Chrome Book cart, um, if you ask some of our students about that, they'll tell you they don't measure up. That's, that's inequitable. Uh, it's, it's not okay. Um, but these are questions that I think you should ask as you move forward, you know? Ask the teachers what they really need. If we have three hundred devices, how many more do we truly need? Uh, if fifth grade's not using any devices at all, do we have enough? How are those Chrome Book, Chrome Books working? Are they really equitable? Um, those are questions that I think you guys should explore as you explore, uh, the money, the money question. Um, anyway, it's been a long day for all of you, and I appreciate your time. Uh, I really do appreciate all of the effort you guys have made in recent months to tackle this. I know you've had a lot on your plate this year, um, and we'll look forward to seeing what you guys come back with here in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Um, closing actions. One thing we need to figure out, this, scheduling this homework workshop has been the most difficult thing. Um, so I don't know whether we should have, just have Wendy kind of survey us, I think, rather than try to figure it out tonight. If you could have Wendy just send us an email, um, because I'm...
Trying, trying to shoot for, uh, May on the off Wednesdays, see if that works.
Oh, right.
I, I think, I think that's...
Just open it up with a bunch of dates and see which one gets the vast majority of the vote, hopefully all of them.
Yeah, I'd maybe start with a couple Wednesdays and see, see what, and see what works.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, is that agreeable to people? Because, uh, I just, you know, we've scheduled, I think, three or four times, and it just has not worked out.
And they, they are ready to present.
Yeah, well, we're ready to, yeah. Okay, and they, you know, just be aware that the next couple meetings are at the elementary schools. Uh, okay? So I think that's it. Um, motion to adjourn? Brian?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Moved by Brian, second by Al. All those in favor? Seven in favor? Return.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm going to do the two, I can use my question, sorry.